It'll be about here's X.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 5:30 and I'll call this regular work session for the Burnsville City Council to order. Our work sessions are very informal and the city clerk will note that for the record that all council members are present. So we continue to work creatively to find solutions so that we can continue to do the business of the people during this global pandemic. So tonight's meeting is being conducted both in person and online. All of our city council members and staff are in the council chambers and practicing social distance. So all of you who are watching us from home, you can see that we're all practicing social dis- distance. And members of the public may attend in person if they so wish, or otherwise the public can watch this meeting online at burnsvillemn.gov slash meetings or Comcast channel 16 or 859. The public can also still participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join or call 651-372-8299. More information is available on our meeting webpage and in the council agenda packet. So please note there is an audio delay if you are watching us on TV or online. So if you speak, please mute your video broadcast first. If Zoom meetings attendees experience audio issues, we ask you to leave the meeting and then log back in. This usually resolves the problem. And so we now move on to the first item on our agenda. And that item is the utility rate study presentation. And Ms. Jenny Rhodey, our finance director is going to present that and introduce our guests.
I'll make a brief introduction. Back in January, the council approved a comprehensive utility rate study. It had been a number of years since we had undertaken such a comprehensive look at our utility rates and we knew we wanted a thorough review of the makeup of those rates. We enlisted Ellers to do that work and they're here tonight to present. So I will turn it over to Stacy Croving for the presentation.
And welcome Stacy. It's good to see you.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Great to see you. Great to be out and about and out of my house for a change from a Zoom meeting in person. Yes, that's exactly it. With me tonight as well is Jean Vogt from our office, who did the majority of the work with the numbers. So if there's any detailed questions, she's here to answer those. To let you know, just in a high kind of overview, when I go through the presentation, if there's something that doesn't make sense, feel free to jump in and ask a question. We can take them as we go. And second of all, when some of the screens come up, there's going to be lots of numbers on there. Not to concentrate on those, but really I put takeaway boxes in there and that's really where we're going to have the discussion from with regards to that. So let's go ahead and jump right into it. So let's talk about the purpose of the study and Jen talked about this. It's really looked at the water and the sewer fund, your storm sewer fund and your connection fee and area charges. And really when you're going through and looking at them, what you want to make sure is that you have tiers that promote conservation of water, which is a great thing. You want to make sure your base charges that you're charging cover the fixed costs of the system. And why is that important? Well, we have dry years and we have wet years and you know what? It still costs the same to provide the services to that system. So we want to make sure that those are always covered. We want to maintain appropriate fund balance and we want to have appropriate cash to pay for capital and reduce bonding if at all possible. That kind of falls through to the storm sewer fund as well. And then the connection and area charges, it was really to look at it to make it a little bit more simplistic and make it consistent with how the Met Council is defining a SAC unit for a community. The parameters that we looked at in the study, one, currently your sewer and water fund are what we would term commingled. So it's all one fund. So we wanted to take those and take those fund balances and separate them because they should really operate as separate enterprise funds, okay? So we want to make sure we had cash balances for reserve and capital that was appropriately appropriated to each of those funds. We want to ensure the funds paid for your capital, your operations and your annual debt service if we had any. And we want to sufficient reserves that would give you one year of operating expenses, which includes depreciation. And then next year's annual debt service if you have any. Again, that's what we're really looking at for that cash balance that you need to have. And then the other big thing is we want to look at your existing contractor Savage. Just say, hey, are they paying what they should be paying for water and is it appropriate? So our approach to the study, when we really look at it, we first really look at, you know, what's the impact to your residents and businesses? Because I know that's a concern and obviously you have to talk to your constituents about this after. Next, we look at really what are the impacts to the fund? Is it healthy? Is it able to do what it's supposed to be doing into the future? And finally, we look at it from an administrative and staff perspective. And that's really what's the ease of administration of going forward with regards to that fund. So the findings, you have a lovely big 11 by 17 paper in front of you and I'm just going to jump to the end. The far right of that is a table. You will see all of the impacts that we're going to talk about to you guys personally on a monthly basis. And you'll want to look to the bottom, which is the navy blue, which is the difference from your bill this year to what your bill would be in 2021. So you can see that monthly difference. So there it all is and we'll talk about how we got there. So hopefully you'll still listen and go through this whole presentation with me and I'll try to keep it pretty short and quick with regards to it. But it's just helpful for you guys to see this because we know that once you do decide to make a decision if you move forward with this is that you have to talk to folks. But also when you can see how it impacts you, you can understand how it's going to impact the other residents. So overall, your funds are in great shape. It says good, but they're actually in great shape. The biggest change that we had to do in your structure was to the base and meter charge because your fixed costs weren't being covered. So we did make that change and alteration, but the good thing is, is that we were able to reduce user rates within that as well. So your overall impact is minimal. And again, you're seeing what the impact is to you individually on a monthly basis with regards to that.
Stacy say more that our base rate wasn't covered before?
So the, your base rate and your, your base fee and meter charge did not cover your fixed costs. And we'll go into more detail about what that means.
Did the new meters then help that?
The new meters, no. The new meters did not help that. So again, it's about, it's a small portion. The meter charge is how you currently have it set up. You have a base fee that's charged and a meter charge. So the meter charge, even though it may have been appropriate or not, your overall fee of those combined wasn't adequate to cover your fixed charges.
So we better make sure we do that.
So yes, so we have done that in this study and that's what's in your impact.
Looking at those pieces that have a direct correlation to that bond rating.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So again, the overall changes aren't overly significant. When we looked at your contract with Savage, we're happy to say that it's pretty much on par. It's a little bit of a short shortage in there, but not much. So you guys did a good job with that contract. And now you really have some good data for moving forward with your next negotiations with them. And then the majority of your capital needs, you're paying with cash, which is great. Probably two thirds of it's paid with cash. The other third, we're looking at bonding. We'll talk a little bit more about that in detail. So again, this is the impact slide that we have. This is just a shortage. If we look into the quartiles of the low, median and high quartiles that we have. And again, you know, the bottom line is that those impacts are pretty minimal. So when we look at that lower tier or the low, their average increase is $3.72 a month. The median is 239 and a high user is about 57 cents a month, okay? And the reason why your balance is that, why are the lower users going up more than the higher users? Is because the lower users weren't paying the fair share of those fixed costs. So that's why they're going to see that change and you'll see how that filters through when we get to more detail. But again, we just wanted to hit you with that upfront on those.
Could you explain that statement?
That the, the lower, and the lower users weren't paying as much.
No, we're not. You said fair share.
Fair share. Proportionate share. So if you take all of those fixed costs and you proportion it out amongst all of the users, the ones that were at the lower rate because of the base charge in the lower meter weren't paying as much as the fixed charges as they probably should have. Because everybody should pay the same proportionate share because all the fixed costs are even throughout the system.
Great, thank you.
So first, let's go in the sewer, water and storm sewer. So again, we talked about this. We wanted water and sewer rates that support themselves. We wanted equity and fairness. So we wanted to look at who's using the system and when are they being charged appropriately? We wanted to have sufficient revenues to pay for future operating, base fees to cover fixed costs, promote conservation, have ease of administration. And more importantly, at the end of the day, when this gets rolled out, staff has to be able to explain to the ratepayers. So when they get the calls, they got to be able to simply say, here's how you're being charged and here's why. So is it simple and is it understandable at the end of the day? So our assumptions, we took 12 months of data, January through December. We have projections of 3% on expenses, 5% on Met Council. That's the sewer only. That's the annual charge that we're seeing on average for the increase and 2% on all other revenues. Your capital needs are about 90 million over the next 10 years. And we have costs inflating at about 3% per year on those. Just taking into consideration potential inflation. So when we look at your capital needs, as you note, on the far right, 90 million are your capital costs that you have over the next 10 years. If you look over on the far left, most of that's with streets. And that's pretty common for a city that's fully developed. You're redoing your streets and so when you're digging them up, you're doing the pipes underneath, which is appropriate. And so that's about 34.4 million of that 90 million dollars. But again, the great thing is, when we look at it, what we try to do is to make sure that your fees and user rates were paying for the majority of those costs. You didn't have to bond all the time. So about a third of those costs are about 30 million you would have to bond for. The other 60 million, you're being able to pay for with cash. Equally, you know, water fund, you do look like you're going to have to bond annually for that, which has been your past practice. But the sewer, we've been able to look at it every other year incorporating into that. So your wholesale water customer is the city of Savage. What you have is a contract that goes through 2023. You can see the annual charges down there. They went from 950 in 2020 down to about 1.1 million in 2023 that will be charged. So when we're looking at the wholesale customer, we want to allocate the operating costs of that system to them. And those operating costs are your reserve capacity, it's your water supply, transition lines. It's everything that goes into making sure that you can supply water to that user. So now a slide with a lot of big numbers, but let's really go to the takeaways. Again, your existing contract that you have is very close to them covering all costs of that system. And so now you have some good data for the next negotiations that you have with them. If you look at number five under there, the net difference of the term between 2018 and 2023 that you have, it's, you're short by about $143,000, okay, on what they should have been charged. So again, that's pretty darn close and that was without having a lot of data to support your negotiations. But now you have it going forward and so we can project what that should be going into the future so that you can recover costs into the future. So again, it's great to know, right?
Yeah.
So when we look at your rate structures, when we looked at fixed charges of the system, again, we want to make sure that those pay for those because those are annual charges that are there regardless of someone turns on their faucet or not. So the base charges and meter charges, they both pay for those. Why we've highlighted or circled the top two? You have a base charge currently of $2 on all users and residential meter of 5 eighths inch or three fourths inch of a buck 20. So in theory, you know, your base charge on a typical residential user is going to be $3.20. And so then we equated everything when we made a change in this system for you, again, back to a residential user. And then when we look at the rates, the usage on the irrigation meters, what we did is that you had a variation of how much you would pay based upon the amount of water you use for irrigation. And we said, you know what? Irrigation's not essential. So you're all going to get charged the same fee. It shouldn't matter. If you use less for irrigation, doesn't mean you should pay less. If you irrigate, you're all paying the same charge. And then the big other one is the snowmaking and this really has to do with Buck Hill. You know, it's not essential, right, water, but it is essential for their business, right? And they are a regional user and an icon for you that gives you definition to who you are in Burnsville. So essentially, we wanted to look at doing a special rate for them to keep them consistent probably with where they've been at and been paying for their water going into the future.
So.
Yeah. I'll come to maybe Schultz.
So in talking about the irrigation rate and pardon me, it's one slide back, apologies. So when you're talk, here we go. When you're talking about irrigation, you're talking about like watering their landscaping, that type of thing, correct? And in talking about how that's not essential. However, we make them have landscaping and we make them have particular types of landscaping. So I would just like to put it forth to council that perhaps this is something we take a closer look at. If on the one hand, we're saying this is not necessary and we're going to do an extra charge. And on the other hand, we're saying, by the way, it is necessary because we're, we're going to make you have these particular types of landscaping. So I'm just pointing, pointing out where perhaps we don't have everything on the same page for this and it's something to look at and address in the future. Thank you.
When you're talking about irrigation or you're talking about the city's irrigation practices or irrigation practices throughout all, everybody? Because when you're using water in your residence, you're not segregating out irrigation when you're using the water or when you're taking a shower.
It's irrigation uses for residential and businesses within your city. And I would say in, you know, for businesses, you know, your, your point maybe hits home a little bit more because those are required to be irrigated, right? Because they're seen, you don't require irrigation on individual, single family homes. You know what I mean? So that's a personal choice on how they decide to keep up their landscaping or not. So we hope that they keep it up, but not everybody does. We all have personal choices with regards to that. But good point.
How do we segregate when you're using water for irrigation and for bathing?
Well, typically you would have a separate meter for irrigation.
Right. So when we're, when we're looking at the irrigation rate, that we're looking at separate irrigation meters, which means there would be a meter, we would consider a domestic meter or meter that's inside the business or the home. And irrigation meter is a meter that is used specifically for irrigation. It serves two purposes. Not only is there a separate weight for water, but then that rate, that meter is also then excluded for sewer rates. There's no sewer charges on those irrigation meters as well.
So is that mostly for our businesses? Because I don't know, when I had my single family dwelling, I live in a, in a condo facility now, but didn't have a separate meter for irrigation.
A lot of single family homes do not. We do see irrigation commonly with businesses, but we also see them with homeowner associations and with apartments. They tend to have a separate meter for irrigation.
Mostly with, with multifamily facilities?
Yep. But even with a, even with a, what we call a uniform rate for irrigation meter, when we take a look at the impacts, it's, we're still not talking about significant changes to their bottom line and their bills as well. But really what we're doing is simplifying how they're being charged.
Okay, that, okay, that, yeah, it's just how they're being charged. Okay.
Okay. So we talked about the fixed cost of the system. And again, that's everything that you have for your staff, your overhead, some of your capital costs for various things that you do with that system. So overall, at the end of the day, when we look at your fixed costs, they're approximately $2.7 million a year. And on your current system charges, you're covering about a third of that with that base and meter charge that you're doing. So that's what we went in to fix. So what we look at now is by making some changes, we have a meter charge now. We got rid of the base charge and we just had charge a meter charge based upon your size that goes down. And now what we have is we have $2.7 million that's covering your fixed costs. Now the thing to know about everything that we do in the rate study when we look at it, we do it as revenue neutral. So what that means, at the end of the day, we're only generating enough revenue to pay for your costs, okay? With just a little bit of coverage. And so as we say, and I love that Jean uses the water bed analogy, which I think we're all old enough to still remember water beds. If you push down in one area, it pops up others. So if we reduce something here, we got to increase something here to get us to a revenue neutral position that we have. So when we look at your residential water usage, we adjusted your tiers that you have. So we took the first tier is 50% of summer usage. And tier two is 92% of the users in your summer usage. And tier three is everything over 92% that we have. So you're promotes conservation while allowing for essential usage in the first tier. So the first tier is 81% of winter usage. So we look at both winter and summer usage. So at the end of the day, 50% of your customers are in that first tier. And that's typically what we like to see. And within your first two tiers of what you're really doing, a little over 90%. And that's pretty typical, what we see and how we set for most commercial or most communities in the metropolitan area. When we look at the commercial water usage, you had 15,000 gallons is 62%. 105,000 gallons is at 90% of them. 2 millions was almost 100% of your folks. So we did a split tier for this that you didn't have before because you only had two tiers before, correct?
No, it was three tiers. Yeah, it was zero to 2 million, 2 million to 3 million and then anything over 3 million. And what we found out is that that first tier break at 2 million encompassed 99.9% of your current commercial usage. So there really wasn't a whole lot of conservation happening there with the first tier being so high.
And then again, when we look at the irrigation water usage, again, we took away from having a few tiers there, just down to your one flat rate that you would have for it. So when we look at your current versus your proposed water rates, your current are on the left-hand side. And so highlighted in that yellow is what we talked about is your base charge and your meter charge for your residential was about $3.20 a month per user. If you look over on the right and you look at the orangish red circle there, that now is going to go up to 882 a month, okay? So that's your increase or charge there. But again, as you remember, when we get to the end of it, we're able to reduce overall rates. So your impact isn't as significant at the end of the day. The sewer fund, when we look at that, the takeaway from the monthly billing that we have is there's no fixed costs associated with that. And your charges can increase differently than the rest of the charges that we have out there. So you have your city sewer, your metro sewer and your sewer only. And your consumption charges that you have there for the rates that are shown. If we look at the fixed costs for the sewer fund, again, your fixed costs are $624,000. And in this fund, you were actually generating more than you needed by almost double. So we could make an adjustment here that again helps your overall rates that we look at at the end of the day. So if you look at the current sewer rates versus the proposed, the current is on the left and your proposed is over on the right. So we have a single base charge that pays 100% of your fixed costs of the system. And so when we combine a city sewer and metro sewer into a single consumption rate, it's easier for users to understand when they get the bill. And you know, they were, staff was getting a lot of questions like, why is there a, you know, a metro, you know, one versus a city one? What's the difference? Well, there really was no difference. So at the end of the day, they're having one rate. It makes sense. This is what it's going to for my sewer fund, for my portion of the sewer bill. And then when we look at your storm sewer fund, essentially everything there, nothing had to be changed because it's self-sufficient, it functions well and it has adequate cash to do what it needs to do. Now the next thing was looking at the connection fees, you know, your city WAC or SAC fees that you would charge. Again, the Met Council already defines what a SAC fee is. So the 2021 rates, rather than having four different rates that you guys had before, would each be condensed into one single rate. So the WAC charge would go to 2250 per unit and the sewer availability charge would go to 600 per unit. Now again, these fees get charged because they are connection fees and they are for the larger system. So development should pay for itself in the sense that they should be contributing to the system in which they're connecting to. So that's what that, that's why they were reduced to one. Because again, everyone gets it because it's one unit and that's how it's defined by the Met Council and it's a simplified rate structure for administration. So when we look at your overall water fund, basically the orange background is your target working capital and the tall blue bars are your actual working capital. And so we always like to try and keep those as close together as possible. And it's always okay if the blue bars are taller than the orange. We don't always want to see the blue bars underneath the orange. So at the end of the day, your water, this is your proposed water fund because we've split those and we're working on splitting those. It's not all finalized yet. But you'll have its own separate fund. Your cash balances are going to be great. They're going to be close to where the targeted should actually be. And it does include annual bonding in this one, just to keep those cash reserves where we see them. Proposed sewer fund, again, when we do the split, again, this is a new fund. The cash balance should exceed or be close to your targets, which we like to see. And it's bonding in odd years.
So in 2020, 2020 and 2021, the, our blue bars are below the target working capital.
You're close and that's okay.
I can't trust you. Scares me when I see things like this. So then we get to, can you go back Stacy said 2022 and it just drops down more? That blue bar.
A little bit. What we're doing there with the new sewer fund, granted, these are new, so the first time they were seeing them separated. And so what we're doing with the sewer fund is it does take a little bit of time to get sewer fund rates up to where they need to be. And rather than doing it all in one year, we're doing it over a couple of years.
Okay. All right. Makes sense.
And then your storm sewer fund, again, you can see is that we didn't have to do anything there because again, you have more than adequate cash balance to take care of all the issues or capital that you have for that system. So how do you guys compare, right, at the end of the day to your, to your neighbors? And what I would say is, I don't always like using comparisons to your neighbors because everybody pays for everything differently, okay? So you guys use your utility rates to pay for your pipes under the streets, right? When you do the reconstructions, not every city does. Some cities use a tax levy or, you know, they have a tax line for it. So it's not always apples to apples. So you always have to feel comfortable in, in who you are, how you're charging for things and where your rates are. But at the end of the day, when we put you in with your typical comparable cities that you, you like to look at, when we highlight both the current rates and the future proposed rates, you're kind of in the middle of the pack of where you're charging. You're not charging the least and you're not charging the most in the overall bill that you have.
And it also looks at the age of our infrastructure as we move forward as well.
Yep.
And it's not always the same with some of the newer cities.
That's correct.
Okay.
So again, when we go back to that impact analysis or the big sheets that you have in front of you, again, because of that change in the base fee, what we have is that the lower users of the system are going to have a little bit more of an increase than the higher end users. But at the end of the day, the impacts overall are pretty minimal. And it goes to the same theory as it works through with regards to your commercial users that you have as well. So with that, it's pretty complex to go through. Thank goodness Jean's here who, who likes to dally in those numbers and try and figure out how the puzzle's going to work to meet the needs that you have for your system that are politically palatable. And it's something that's easy for you guys to describe to your residents at the end of the day. But hopefully where we're at now with some of the rate tiers, especially for water, will help promote conservation within your community. You're having a balance between your retail and wholesale water users. So you know you're in a good position when you go into your next contract negotiations with Savage. You have a good balance between your fixed and variable costs. So if you have a dry year, you're not going to be shorting that fund or dipping into your cash reserves, which is great. And then we have a balance between what's using, what the users use and what they pay for. So they're kind of evening out. So what I pay for, I'm actually using, which is great. So the rate increases are necessary. You guys have been doing that on an annual basis anyway, at least inflationary. And that's about where we ended up at the end of the day with the restructure of your system. That your annual increases are inflationary to cover costs as they continue to go up. And they shouldn't be overly significant or burdensome. So with that, we're happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Questions to Stacy and the team. It's pretty comprehensive. A lot of good work has gone in, very thoughtful work. So staff, yes. You know, you can push a button and I can see it right here.
I was just waiting for you to look back this way. You don't pay anything extra for water.
No, because see, my, my facility, it's in, it's in our dues.
I'm getting burned the hardest.
Looks like you're going to pay your very share.
You have young kids, probably run a lot of bathwater laundry.
Yeah, yeah. Well, let's see, you've got three more, you've got three more.
You have such a low water bill with all those kids. I don't know why. I have such a large one, quite frankly, and we'll check our leaks.
I just have a quick question about the irrigation system again. So when we talk about requiring meters, would that would require installation of new meters? And I don't know, do we have a list of how many residential homes in Burnsville have irrigation systems? I just, I'm seeing potential for that being kind of messy.
We looked.
Ryan.
There'll be, this won't require any new meters. If you're already irrigating off of your domestic regular water supply, you can still continue to do that. This would be more for places like the HOAs though, communities that have a meter. It would, it would change for them. But this, this study will not be requiring new meters to be put in to run irrigation systems.
Okay.
And Ryan, do you allow for people to have an irrigation meter in their single-family residential unit if you, if they prefer?
I think if someone really wanted to irrigate, they could do that if they wanted to, but it's not a requirement.
So it's not required, but if they want to, they can? And I don't know why you would want to do that, to have a separate meter to, for irrigation.
Would there be a benefit to doing that?
There would, there would because you don't have to pay sewer on the water that you get for an irrigation meter because it's going into the grass, not down the pipes and out the.
So it might be worth mentioning that in a communication that if you have an irrigation system and you're willing to do that, it would.
I think most of the big users understand, understand that. Most, for most single-family homes, it probably isn't going to be beneficial.
My guess is that our businesses do that, all have irrigation meters.
I keep thinking residential in my head, but yeah, commercial probably has systems.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. So if there are no other comments, staff will then bring it back for the final utility enterprise fund. And this will come with the, when we are all moving through our budgets and the new fees and so forth.
Yep.
Stacy and Jean, thank you so much. This is really good work and good information. And I like that you think about how we communicate to our residents so that it's easy to communicate to them, so that it's not so confusing. So great talking points that we need to make sure that people understand. And when they see the changes, I think they're going to like it because they're only going to see two different rates rather than what we have now where there's all these different rates and they wonder, you know, why are we paying the council when in reality it can all go into and so, yes. Okay.
Nice to see you all.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
Stay healthy.
Yep.
Be well.
Get you out of the house.
Okay, the next one is our Nicola Commons Park Water Feature. And Ryan, this is yours, yours and Garrett's.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Once again, thanks for having us tonight. And we'll be talking about a really exciting project that we got upcoming. Part of it's, my part's the boring part, fixing it. Eric gets to talk about all the fun stuff that you might get to add.
Yeah, and you know what? There are a lot of people watching tonight because there are a lot of people are interested in what we're doing there because they're missing it.
Okay, so I'll get glassed over and then we'll. That's the way it should be.
Well, you're the hero because you're going to fix it.
And I keep telling them that we're taking this opportunity with COVID to get it all fixed.
All right. Well, we'll, we'll go, go forth that way then. So all right, like I said, this will be part rehabilitation and then also some discussion on enhancement opportunities. So this is a picture that we show on our website, a little bit pixelated, but it is such a beautiful place and we want to make sure it stays that way. I will quickly run through the history of the Nicola Commons Park Water Feature, talk about some of those operational issues and rehabilitation methods we'll be using, enhancement opportunities, a schedule, and then we'll be looking for some direction on this once it's done. The park itself with the feature was constructed in oh-three, oh-four. Originally, we thought it'd be people sitting there, maybe hanging, dangling their feet in there, looking at it, but it was not expected to be nearly as interactive as it was. It's, as everyone knows, during normal year, that place is, is rocking. There's a lot of people there. Got to the point that we actually, Department of Health called us up and said, this is a pool. You guys need to have this thing chlorinated and the water needs to be safe. So we actually had to go and retrofit the whole thing so that it's putting out water that would be to the San Marcos Pool. All our park maintenance people are certified to run pools and that sort of thing because of it. So that retrofit was done in two thousand nine, two thousand ten area. I thought maybe you'd be interested in how, how this thing actually runs. The, the red arrows are, are water coming into the vault. So the, the brains of the operation are in this area. Oh, can you see the, maybe you can't.
Where's your cursor?
I'm trying to, I can see it on this screen, but. Oh, there we go.
There it is.
We'll go in this, we'll go in this mode. There's a vault here that is, contains like all the pipes come in and out and all that sort of thing. And the water supply from the, the city system comes in this direction. And then the, so the red arrows are where the water is coming into here and the blue arrows is water leaving. So when we had to retrofit it, we, we added on, this is right next to Med Cruz Cafe, and the water goes over here and then there's a big filter system that treats the water and, and makes it safe for everyone to go be in. And then it comes back to the vault and then it goes up, a portion of the water goes all the way up to the top, so it can come all the way back down, around and back. And then another portion of the water actually goes here to operate those jets. So it's two different things. And then when, when this water all comes back around, we reclaim it and use it over again. And then it goes back over here, treated and it goes in a big circle. So some of the water goes, is reused and some of it is brought in from the normal city system. So that's just a little bit of an example of how it actually does operate. Let's see what happens. The rest of it, hopefully I don't need a cursor for. So then what are some of the problems we're having? Water loss. We used more than three million gallons of water last year in the feature, of which about one million would be the expected. So we lost almost two million gallons of water through leaks. So that's, definitely doesn't meet our sustainability goals.
No, where did it go? Does it erode underneath then?
It's, it's, yeah, just.
That's not going to be, well, it would destabilize the structure then.
It's, we haven't found that to be the biggest problem, but it's just the fact that it is leaking and it's, it's, it's found its ways to, to get itself.
It's returning to the water table, around where it came from.
Well, let's hope, but it's not, I would, well, let's hope.
And then we got a component access challenges. It's a difficult thing for our staff to get into and then some of the components are obsolete. This isn't an actual leak, the picture there of our system, but just in general, what, what can happen. So we've got broken pipes, the lights in there are leaking. This is an actual picture on the bottom.
But that's not our system. Just make sure that the people who are watching, make sure, that's not what's happening underneath.
Well, it's, it could, there is things like this occurring. There are breaks in the pipes. So this is the things that we got to fix. This just isn't an exact picture of our system, but there is that going on. And then the, we have leaked lights that leaked, the cans where the water goes in. The cracking, that actually is our picture of our system there where you can see the crack there. So those are, are areas where water can escape. And then we do end up with, there's a lot of trees and stuff around there. So the system gets clogged and then the, the recirculation doesn't work as well because some of those components are getting clogged up. So, so what are we going to do to fix some of these things? Well, we're going to go in and dig down and replace the pipes that are broken. We plan on sealing up those lights that are no longer, or that, that are leaking. The cracks, we're going to repair those and then monitor them in the future. And we're not proposing full sale landscaping changes in the area, but we're, as things change, we'll be trying to move those trees and shrubs a little bit further away from the water park to avoid that particular situation. I thought I'd just show you what it looks like in that valve, valve vault. So this is what operates the whole thing. So the cover's extremely heavy and cumbersome for our staff to get into and, and monitor. As you can see, if you had to try to get down in there, it's be nearly impossible. And the location is right by everything else. So if we are digging in there, it's very difficult to, it's a hazard then for users. So how are we going to try and handle this? We're going to replace the cover. And actual, the components is a little bit going to be Garrett-dependent. If we're going to do a lot of enhancements, that needs some more, more pipes going in and out, as you can see, we won't be able to keep it in the same spot. There's just no more room. So the more things we do to enhancements out there, the more risk we'll have of having to move it. So that's the situation with component access rehabilitation. And then finally, some of the components are obsolete. This is a picture, a graphic of the filter system that's in that room by Med Cruz Cafe. We'll be replacing those filter systems that are, it's discontinued. They don't have, doesn't, we couldn't purchase a replacement of the same type anymore, so we plan on replacing that. The jet system that shoots the water up is outdated and so is the lights. So we're planning on replacing the filter system, replacing the jets, but we're hoping to at least use, reuse the lights. As I said, we're going to seal them up and then also retrofit the interior to be more with today's technology, most likely going to LED and that sort of thing. So the, the budget that we have for rehab is three-quarters of a million dollars. We think we're going to be in the ballpark for that. As you can imagine, this is really not a typical project. So until you bid it, you don't know what you got for cost, but we, we think we'll be in the ballpark with that for, just to take care of the rehabilitation. With that, I turn it over to Garrett.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I think all of you know I spend a portion of my time tag-teaming the management of our park system with Jeff Rattick. And he gets to work on some of, as, as Ryan pointed out, some of the more boring things and, and we get to look at some of the more exciting things. But as, as Jeff has been digging into this for the last couple of years, and it started to grow in, in the complexity of the issue, it allowed us to, on the imagination side, start thinking about how could we possibly reimagine this park if we get to a point where it's going to be down for a period of time? You know, if you think back to two thousand four, and as Ryan mentioned, the original intent of this park, how the growth in the popularity of splash pads has taken place over the course of the last decade. Our focus on placemaking in our community has changed and the fact that there's three new developments that are going in there, either currently or in the near future, actually over five hundred new units that will increase the demand in this park, which is already very popular, as Ryan pointed out. So as we considered all this, it just made sense to, to start looking at, you know, what are the possibilities down there if we do have that opportunity? There was a committee of myself, Paul Miskman from our Parks Department and J.J. Ryan. With that committee and Bar Engineering, we have the knowledge of how Nicola Commons Park is programmed, what the daily active and passive uses are down there, not only in that park, but also at Cliff End Park where we do have the lion splash pad. And so we got together as a group with Bar and just spent time on the site brainstorming and analyzing how this park is, is used and what some of the possibilities are. Bar also had a chance to look at a, a park in Rosemont and a park in Maple Grove, which have been built since two thousand four with similar looks to what Nicola Commons has to offer, but more enhanced in the splash pad type areas. And as I mentioned, we also just kind of considered the playground look and feel and experience of a Cliff End Park versus Nicola Commons Park, which has concerts and weddings and is the front stage for Ames Center, has people go over there for lunch, for work breaks and just hanging out and whatnot and, and what those different experiences are and things like that. In the end, we settled on, for tonight's purposes, it, it just bring to you a more classic vision of what that could mean, which means it enhances the experience down there, but it doesn't change the overall environment and atmosphere of what Nicola Commons currently offers. So if we look at our existing conditions from an experience standpoint, I would say, Ryan kind of talked about how the water flows down the river and it's divided up into five different pools as it flows from the top to the bottom. There's also three riverbeds that are off to the left side. They talked about how that's recirculated and whatnot. And there's five plaza jets. And inside the river, we have a couple fish and frogs that kind of shoot water across that kids interact with as they go up and down the river and into the pools and whatnot. So as we were putting together this proposal for tonight, we, we looked at the classic options, as I mentioned. We wanted to look at a common feature across all three of them. So there's going to be a small, a medium and a large version to ponder and think about as a possibility. All of these features would have an activator. Currently, Nicola Commons runs off of a timer. And so every half hour or so, a message comes on in the water. And so there's really no opportunity to, if you're only there for twenty minutes and you missed it, to have an interaction and whatnot. On the flip side, down at Cliff End Park, anytime a kid is down there at a splash pad, they can push the button and they can experience whatever the, the splash pad has to offer at that time. So we've thought about the fact that an activator would be involved in this, the opportunity for LD, LED lighting to enhance the experience in the evening and at night throughout the park. A need for remote programming and sequence, sequencing. Obviously, as I mentioned, we have different events down there, weddings, concerts, whatever, for a staff person to be able to either program it in advance or if there's a need to make a quick change for whatever reason, that we can open up an app or go to a website and make adjustments without having to impact staff time to come in and actually manually do things, which is currently the case. So, and then the opportunity to add speakers and, and music to, again, provide another experience that the park doesn't really have currently at this time. So an enhancement opportunity number one, we'd be looking at, in, in that particular package that you'll be seeing here, there's no change to the river or pools, would be adding LED lighting under the bridges, would add eight jets to the plaza area, so it'd increase from five up to thirteen. The cost of the equipment to do this, along with the other basic things that I mentioned earlier, that would be part of it, an activator switch, speakers, music, things like that, is about eighty thousand dollars. Our consultant did not have enough time to really dig into, and as, as Ryan mentioned, this is a unique situation, which impacted their time. So this is purely an estimate that a small enhancement to this park, when you add in the equipment and the construction work to pull it off, we're looking at about, estimating about three hundred thousand dollars is, is the ballpark that we're shooting at. So what that would get you, you see in the, in the upper left-hand corner there, the aqua color is the existing river and pools and, but what you really see is in the, in the plaza area, the purple circle. So the ones at the top of the plaza are the existing five. And so you'd see an addition of eight more that get added to the bottom portion of the plaza, which would be the southwest side of it essentially. And so if you look at a rendering, again, this is just one particular rendering. Fountains and spray jets can go at angles. They can, they don't have to be straight up and down. They can be more of a fountain-y look or a, kind of a funnel-type look to them and things like that. So all those details weren't really factored into what the specific ones would look like, but it's more the idea of just kind of giving you a visual of the different experience that you could see down there with a package like this. Enhancement opportunity number two would include all of option one and then would start to incorporate the experience into the river and pool. So you wouldn't have to have twenty kids all running to the plaza. When those features went on, they could still be interacting with water in the river and pool. in the river and pools at different times. There'd be more LED lights into those rivers and pools. Additional jets in the plaza. And again, as a result, as you make these additions, there are additions to the equipment cost and ultimately to the project cost. So you're starting to see, again, the rendering that we were provided with, you don't get a feel for what those fountains might look like in the river, but you start to see the addition of more jets around and the fact that how they can spray. I'd point out in both option one and two, one of the things that we intentionally talked about was, you know, if I'm a mom, a dad, a grandparent, or if I'm just there on my break and I want to walk through the plaza and someone pushes the button, maybe I don't want to get wet. So if you look at option one and two, you see that they're really strategically placed so that someone could, if all of a sudden someone pushes the button and they're in that area, that they could get to a safe, dry place and make their way through the plaza and not have to worry about that. So, and then as we jump to option three, that'd be all of option one and two. Again, it's increasing the number of water features, both within the river and the pools, the amount of LED lights, the number of jets in the plaza. And in this case, we talked about, we have the obelisks down there, and could we incorporate some type of water feature into those so that they spray out and create a different experience too, right? So how do we use the existing structures that are down there to be even more interactive? So, so that's what that opportunity looked like. In this particular case, you can no longer walk safely through the center of the plaza. If, with this rendering, that doesn't mean you couldn't go with something similar to this and make that a possibility. But you kind of see the obelisks are shooting water out of the top of them. There's a nice, large fountain in the middle shooting up, just as an example. And again, all of these, what the fountains would, or the spray cans would actually look like and how they would shoot water can all be changed and whatnot. But for the purpose of tonight's presentation, we just wanted to give you a feel for what the quantity could possibly look like in these spaces. So with that, tonight, we are hoping to get some direction on your thoughts about, one, the project in general, and then if there is a desire to continue to pursue some type of an enhancement and what that might look like as we work together to try to put together our final plans and bid, which we'd look to be doing over the course of the rest of this month into August to get those out. If time permits and things go smoothly, we'd be looking at getting some of the work started in fall 2020 with the expectation that when the weather permitted in the spring of 2021, that we'd look to complete the project. And again, all these outdoor parks and recreation programs are always weather permitting, but we'd be hopeful for, to be ready to go when we typically open. We usually open Nicola Commons Park a little bit before Memorial Day. It's, I think, the third weekend in May. But we'd be looking to hopefully be up and running by that time. So with that, Mr. Peterson and myself will stand for any questions you may have.
Questions, comments?
Well, we don't have a city pool or a community center, but we do have a YMCA. We don't have a water park like Apple Valley does and some other cities. But what we do have is two water feature locations, Cliff End and Nicollet. And they're, they're sort of our, very, very important to our kids and grandkids, community asset to go play in the summertime. So I tend to be in favor of enhancing Nicola Commons to become more of what people have been wanting it to be all along, which is more of a water playground than a visual appeal, more interactive. Although I would, I would say that adding ground-based fountains all over the entire plaza area wasn't necessarily what I thought about first because it has, it is a multi-use. So I think of it as like trying to take the current Cliff End splash pad and go, when that water's off, what else can we use that space for? It really is just a water splash pad alone. So I was tending to thinking I would rather see water features, some of the more popular ones from all over other water parks, but done in the pool areas where that's always going to be water. There's always going to be water running there. Kids are always going to be playing there, rather than trying to spread the water out in that entire center area that is remaining, I'll call it the dry space right now, that isn't, except for the five fountains that are there. Because it looks like in some of those pool areas where the frogs are that are shooting water, you know, if you add more water features there, you're just making what's there a lot more fun for the kids, but you're not really invading dry areas where other people might want to walk or sit or whatever. I think your concern for somebody hitting the button is very true down there because you don't see the stuff, right? It's all coming from flush-mounted spigots in the ground, and it can surprise you. So I'm not sure that sort of surprise is ideal for that setting. But when you incorporate things in the river itself and in those pools and just make more water features there, you really are enhancing what exists there and not trying to interfere with or make the rest of the dry space into a splash pad so much. So there may be a hybrid in there, but I would love to see some things incorporated into those pools that make them a little bit more fun as a splash pad and not just as a running stream with a couple frog shoots, you know, like water spouts. Because there's things that we can do inside there that can add some more kid fun without having to extend that into that dry area. That's just my thoughts.
And in the river?
Yeah, and in the river itself too. I mean, there's always going to be water there. So how can you just make that water more fun with other features that can bring the water up and spread it out, like the splash pad? The splash pad has that one short post that sort of shoots out a mushroom-shaped water. That is, when I have my grandson down there, that is constantly being used by every kid. They all want to run underneath that or through it or walk up to it. It's a more gentle way for younger kids, I've noticed, to get used to the water. And then, of course, the bucket. That is like the highlight of, because the older kids love to stand underneath it and test their courage to get dumped on. And maybe that kind of thing doesn't make as much sense within Nicola Commons, but some of those other low-lying ones, you know, the shorter types of water features that are fun, that can produce different water sprays and situations within the river and within those pools, I think enhance what we already have quite a bit, but allow us to do other things, or people to come down and sit in that area or walk and not be shocked when they get a spray. Because if that's what's going to happen, then no one will walk through the center. They'll all be constantly going around, and the center wouldn't maybe get as used as much for people just passing through or wanting to walk around the area. So I don't know. It seems like it's forcing something where it doesn't belong to me, but that's just my thought.
Okay. Anyone else? Comments?
I, I'm also in favor of enhancing this park. And if we're going to do it, this is definitely the time to do it because it's down. We got to fix everything down there anyways. It's, if we don't do it now, it may be years before we can get at it again because I wouldn't be here to say, yeah, let's tear it up again in three years and start putting this stuff in. As long as we have it torn up, now would be the cheapest time to get it done and really enhance that area. And you're right, it's a, it's just a draw for not just this community, but for communities all around us, they love that park. And of course, you know, I get in there at least once a year for something. And it's a lot of fun down there. So I, to what level, I'm not sure where we're at here on that yet, but I would certainly be in favor of enhancing the effects down in that park.
Okay. I see, Councilmember Workman, you're on.
Thank you. I think there's probably a way to create a hybrid of all three of these in some way. I, I agree. I don't know if we need to overdo the jets and the plaza, like number three, but maybe increase the quantity. I don't know what the magic number is. And I like the idea of adding more lights and enhancing that in the evening. And if it's possible, Garrett, I don't know if that's part of your plan, but is there a way to do, you know, multicolored lights, different types of light shows, you know, and really kind of add some muscle to that? I think that would be really cool. And then you're providing that to weddings and other scheduled events if they have a theme. And then I agree, you know, the water features within the existing water areas. To Councilmember Keely's point, you know, I think the people that want to be dry will know that if they're not near there, that they have that better opportunity. Whereas with the jets, you know, coming out of the obelisks, it kind of turns into this. I don't know. But I think, I think there's room to do kind of, like I said, like a hybrid of all three of these. And I'm comfortable doing this sooner than later because this is really a treasure for us. And if we can beef it up while keeping it kind of classy of the way we have it now, I'd say let's do it.
You, Councilmember Workman, if I could, yes, the light system that we were looking at, I would envision it to be traditionally set up with a white light, but we could change it for any particular reason. If it was a certain holiday or a festival or whatever, they could change. And they're all on timers, they could, and programmable. So that's absolutely part of the system, yes.
Well, no different than the Ames Center pillars that change throughout the seasons.
Kara, you have the floor.
Thank you. The fixing of it is definitely a need. I mean, that's, there's no question on that. I think the plan that's brought forward on the enhancements, it looks amazing. I mean, it looks really good. I agree that this is an amenity that our community loves and is a draw to our community. But we were just talking in the last meeting about helping our businesses because of the struggle they're going to be going through and looking at helping even our homeowners because of the struggle they're going to be going through. I understand that now is, is, like, if you were going to do it now, is the time to do that. That makes sense because you have it ripped up. I understand that, and I don't dispute that. I also realize that I am going to be outvoted on this. But to me, the enhancements are a want, and we have a lot of, we have a lot of needs coming up. And I, I think we're in such financial uncertainty, especially going into 2021, that it just doesn't look right when so many people are struggling financially in our city to do this. That is my, my personal opinion on this, so.
So, yes, Ryan?
I could add, funding source for this would be park dedication funds.
Yeah, and that's what you said in the background.
Yeah, so those would, you can't use it for...
That's right, for anything else.
...the stuff you described, believe me, I'm not undebated at all. But it's, there is a funding source that's dedicated to expansions of the systems that would be used.
Yep, no, I absolutely understand that. I, I just, I think we're going to be in a crunch in every, in every area. And I think we're going to have to stretch every dollar, and I don't care what bucket you get that dollar out of. That is my concern. And we do have parker dedication piece. But we, I mean, we don't know what's going to be coming up and for how long and how we're going to have to work with our parks and our recreation, which are being heavily utilized, and how to adapt that. I mean, we're just talking about getting the bathrooms going again for Crystal Lake Beach, and that was no easy thing to even find someone to do it and clean it properly. So, I mean, these are my concerns that I have. So it's not that I don't think that this would be amazing or that now would be the time to do it because you have it torn up.
It's just bad optics, right? At a time like this, but...
It is, it's bad optics at this time. And I, I am concerned that, that we are going to need monies later for things that are desperate needs and not our wants. So I'm just being very cautious on this. Maybe it's overly cautious, but, you know, that's, that's my thought on it. That's where I'm at on it.
Madam Mayor, can I?
Yes, you want to follow up?
Yeah, just, I mean, I think you bring out some very good points. I mean, it is, a lot of things that we've talked about in the last three months have seemed odd and out of place, and some we immediately kicked down the road because we could, we had the option. And so this is not the right time for this. The one thing that supports doing this for the community is because of COVID, people are staying home, they're not leaving, going away. I think our parks have seen record, certainly the splash pad is swamped when it's warm outside. And so there's, it's become, our parks have suddenly become a greater asset than they ever were because people are sort of stuck not being able to do a lot of other things. And so to have this going on with our Nicola Commons Park water feature non-existent is frustrating because now they would love it more than ever to have it and to be able to use it. So bad optics, but we do have funding source that is through park dedication, which we've seen some additional funds come into because of our additional development before it stalled a little bit because of COVID. But, so we might be able to actually get this going and be able to return it as a great community asset. And I have a feeling, I agree with you, Councilmember Schultz, the tails on this thing is going to last a while, which means I think next year, we're going to see record attendance using our parks and water features again. And this wouldn't get, I don't know, what was the timetable that you were throwing out there? Or did you put a timetable?
Twenty twenty-one is what they're like to...
Yeah, so essentially, it's down for the rest of this year.
Yep.
It's not going to turn on this year. Okay, thank you.
So I want to thank staff because it's something that we've been working on for a long time. We've known about the infrastructure, the underground infrastructure. And so finally, here it is. So it's not a want, it's a need. This needs to be done. So while we're doing that, we're looking at enhancing Nicollet Commons Park because we need to update it. And so I agree that perhaps on the plaza area, maybe not so many jets. But in the river portion, I think, you know, where the kids are. And we need to remember that when we designed this park, it was for the little people, like eight and under. Because when you go to other areas in our community, the little folks were always run over. And they had Nicollet Commons Park where they can enjoy it. And it is a need for those little folks. And I see a lot of grandparents bringing their children there. So it is a need in our park system for that demographic. And as long as we're doing it, and we do have the funding, and I know that you have a capital improvement plan because that's one of the things that we do so well, that's one of the things that the rating agencies look at, whether it's our infrastructure on our park system or our infrastructure on our roads above the ground and below the ground. So we've done a great job with that all along. And so this is the time to do it. So I'm not quite sure about the water feature coming out of the obelisks. It looks great, looks wonderful, but it could get somebody, when they're sitting there, for instance, Jazz Fest or International Fest, and somebody however triggers it, it might be a nice cooling feature when it's really hot out to have the spray. But someone might just do that. But anyway, I like the thinking around all of that. I could see some of those features that you had along the river because I see a lot of small kids just, because there's not enough that they could drown, but they could... And I know we thought about all of that when that was designed. So it is the right time. It is a need. We're doing it now. We need to make sure that it's done well because it's going to carry us for our next 10, 15 years. So, before we get back to doing it. And I think how people will say, because right now, I get a lot of calls. And when I'm out walking, and I've been doing a lot of walking since COVID, people do ask, why is Nicollet Commons Park not open? Have a lot of grandparents who live in my building who is... Have a lot of grandparents who live in my building whose grandchildren love to come there because then grandparents can take them over. And I know you'd bring your grandchildren there too. If my grandchild was here, it would, she would be there every day if she could, because it is a wonderful place for, for the young people. So to meet the needs of that particular demographics and make sure that we are doing this right for the next 10, 15 years before we get back to it. As long as we're doing it, we better do it right. So. Any other comments? Okay, I think you have good, clear direction. Brian?
So I think we're hearing it's acceptable to have some new assets in the plaza area.
Yep.
But maybe we need to put some bricks in there that's like safe zone or something. If you walk here, you won't get sprayed or something. I don't know.
Madam Mayor.
You want to bring it back and say, here's an updated concept, you know?
Bring some new ideas.
You know, but
Those features that go in the pools.
With what you're hearing. But the thing is, and oh, by the way, yes, please do start that this fall so that it opens Memorial Day 2021. Yes, Garrett?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, just, yeah, to recap, we'll focus on the pools and rivers. We'll look at adding some additional jets to the plaza, but not too much. And keep in mind, because this is programmable and like even currently right now, there is a voice-activated speaker that comes on and says, the jets are about to start if you don't want to get wet, please, right? So we'll make sure that whatever goes into place, that people have a warning and they can be aware of the fact and, and we'll keep that in mind in that as we go through this for sure.
So the other thing that I saw, and you need to have it because it is a need, is to have a speaker system, because remember, we have to haul all of that stuff into Nicollet Commons Park for all of the events that we have down there. And I know that because every time we have the lighting of the Christmas tree, we have to haul all that stuff there. And so we have to have good speaker systems down there. And you did have that in your concept that you brought. The other is that you have, you need all of that, everybody, anybody, International Festival.
Make stage with a back line and the speakers would be great.
Yeah, but you know, you just need to update all of that.
Laser shows.
That would be, oh, thank you.
Because we, we use it for so many things. And so there is a need. And you all know that because you're the ones who have to haul all of that out there.
We, in order to try to meet that schedule, we really do not have time to come back to you. So
That's fine.
We're, we're planning on taking what we heard tonight and put it in there. We may consider bidding some of those out as alternates for you to consider with the actual cost.
Kara?
I would like to hear a dollar amount.
So basically
Because that was a big range. That was like, what, a hundred and thirty thousand more up to six hundred thousand more? That's kind of a big range for me to be like, yeah.
How about if you sent that to Melanie and then she'll share it with us? And if there's any discrepancy, because I know you have to get moving with it because you have to send out the bids.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I, I think, and I don't want to speak for Ryan, but because of the timeline that we're on, it would be nice to leave tonight with kind of a do not exceed number that you're comfortable with. And I, I think the, the three options were, if I remember correctly, like three hundred thousand, five hundred thousand and like six hundred and fifty thousand.
So if you reduce some of those jets on the obelisk and some of the others, you're going to reduce that. So do you want to say not to exceed five?
Well, I, I'm also concerned about design and what water elements are going to be put in. So.
Be very quick with your, with your design people and get it to Melanie. So when she talks with us on a weekly basis, that's, she can share it with as an, and also.
But I'm okay with, Councilmember Schultz is giving a target dollar amount.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not fair to staff without a dollar amount.
Yeah, no.
A dollar amount.
Yeah, so not to exceed.
Do it modified, I'd imagine the five hundred thousand would be probably the mid-range that you were talking about, not to exceed.
Not to exceed five hundred. Ryan?
One thing you can do on these is you can bid things as alternates.
Oh, yes, that's, yeah, and you did have that.
See what they do come in as and then we could bring that forth for discussion when we actually receive the bids as well. We could sort of bid, bid things in increments so that you can get a good idea of where you want to go. Once we know what the actual costs are, because this stuff is so non-typical.
Yep.
I don't even, I'll say it on the camera, I don't even trust our estimates we're going to get because we, I don't know what, this is one of those projects you have to bid to see what it actually costs because we might think it comes with something. And maybe it'll be 20% under because the contractors are really hungry for work, could go the other way. So that'd be one option is to do incremental alternates. And then, then you can pick and choose what it is you kind of want.
Yeah, I like the bid alternate for peace because we've done that in the past. Yeah, Kara?
Yeah, that, that would be, I think, very helpful. And then we kind of have a, a record of that because keep in mind, this is, this is on top of the seven hundred and fifty thousand. So, I mean, we're at three quarters of a million for repairs.
Yep.
So.
Yeah. So that'll, so if you, you can get us, how you do the bid alternate and a concept as quickly as possible.
Looking at a cap of about a half a million dollars. Is that kind of
And then a cap, yeah.
Okay.
Not to exceed five.
Estimated cap.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
An estimated, yeah.
A half million dollars.
And working within those parameters.
Yeah.
Got it.
Because, okay, is that clear?
Yeah, I think we're good.
Very good. We're moving on.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
We have a new item that we're adding to the agenda and I'm curious if there's any way that we could, because we have guests sitting, waiting to speak, if we could move that item next and go to the DUCs.
You mean the CARES Act?
Yeah, the CARES Act discussion now and then resume with the duck discussion and the council.
Is there, is, is there any objections to have the CARES Act? Okay. Melanie, you want to tee that up then, the CARES Act?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and council. We added an item to tonight's agenda, COVID-19 updates, following up from last week's discussion about the CARES Act. So we've got Community Development Director Jenny Faulkner here. And I do understand we've got some guests here that may also want to speak, but if acceptable to the council, I thought Ms. Faulkner could do her presentation.
Absolutely. Yes. So, welcome Jenny.
Thank you. Ten seconds. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So, I was out on vacation.
I know, welcome back.
There was a lot of talking, wasn't there? So.
You look relaxed.
I was until Sunday night maybe, but anyways.
Until Monday morning?
Yeah, no, Monday morning, yeah, when I saw you. But before we get into the CARES stuff, I did watch your meeting and the EDC meeting and put together a framework based on the discussion that you had. So just looking for your continued input on that as this progresses. But what also happened yesterday is we rolled out the Tour de Flavor promotion, which is our substitute for International Festival. You all got the handout.
Yeah, yeah.
And we just want to put in a plug in. Thanks, Kirk Collins.
I'll be getting the first one signed tomorrow.
Will you? Well, it doesn't, it starts July 18th to the 25th. You can still go tomorrow, but you'll have to go again. We've got about 11 of our ethnic restaurants participating in this. You just need to get their signature on the back to participate, although we have more than that. Yes, Madam Mayor?
So there's a new one. It's a Thai restaurant. It, it's in the Bruegers. Can, can I put that down here someplace and they can sign it to add to that? Because they're pretty new. I think they've only been open a month?
Madam
Or just after COVID.
Madam Mayor, I believe we've reached, we may have reached out to them and they may not have wanted to, I don't know that they are, would be a willing participant, but if they are, then certainly, if we can, we certainly can update this. So, but anyways, I wanted to let you all know and let the public know, this is rolling out. Go to Burnsville's website for more information. And I just want to thank the partnership with Experience Burnsville that we did do on this as well in identifying the restaurants and what's available. So if you, we can't travel the world right now, kind of is the thinking, but you can get all the flavors of the world right here in Burnsville is the concept. So we've got some prizes for those who submit either on social media or drop, they can drop these off at City Hall after they visited at least one restaurant. We hope that they would visit more. So this is a way for us to promote businesses, small businesses that don't have a lot of marketing dollars that have been significantly impacted from COVID. So we're happy to, to roll this out. So start with that. I'm going to thank AE2S too for the great graphics and all the stuff. They're a great partner to the city. So getting into the CARES business program guidelines, I just wanted to start with letting you know kind of what the general guidelines are. So this is guidance that we've received that we're working under because a lot of great ideas came from you guys and also from the EDC. So these are kind of the parameters that we have. Two big ones on this page, funding has to, is necessary because of the public health emergency. So approved expenditures have to be used for actions taken to respond to that emergency. The second one here is that the business funding was not accounted for in our budget and it wasn't. That one, we can check that box. And that it is used to cover eligible business expenses between a specified period of time. So we're talking from March 1st of this year to November 15th. Identified eligible expenses. So I think you've heard this before, but funds cannot be used to replace lost revenues. They can cover operating expenses and this information is coming from deed primarily, expenses such as payroll, rent lease, mortgage payments, utilities and other suppliers and other critical business expenses. We could potentially include business consulting. This came up at your discussion last week. That, it would, those expenses would have to have been incurred from March to November during that timeframe. So we're not talking about anything happening after that. And it could be used for consulting that could be, help them, we, I'll use the word pivot their business operations, right? Modify that. So we believe we can use that. I think we're still looking for further clarification from the league on that, but at this point, we don't see that. We couldn't use the dollars for that. And then the county on their eligible expenses, they approved their program today and they have outlined three months of operating expenses. So I want to be sure as we go along here this evening to highlight what's different from what the county and deed have approved. So the underlying items would be things that you've talked about that are different from those other programs. So what does our framework, framework look like or could look like? Fifty FTEs or less? And the unhighlighted or un-underlined ones are standard from deed and the county. So these are things I think that you talked about at your last meeting. Private business, so they have to have a physical presence here. Majority owned by a resident of Minnesota. I, we don't really care if they live in Burnsville, but the business is here. That's kind of the main concern, I think, that we heard. Have to be in good standing. And then, of course, meeting the criteria for the federal CARES Act, they have to be adversely affected and they have to demonstrate a financial hardship. And then also there's number seven, we're saying that it could be businesses that have received other types of federal funding such as SBA idle or the PPP program. We, we could note in our program that only those unreimbursed expenses are eligible with our dollars. So they're not double dipping if that was a concern. And then new items that have come up during our discussions here locally, we could include a home-based business. The deed program and the county's program does not, except for daycares. And then other city programs that have, some of them have a minimum of one employee outside the residence. So if you are interested in allowing home-based businesses, are you concerned that they have employees or are self-employed? In discussions I have seen, there were comments about being self-employed. Folks may have qualified for the extra assistance, six hundred dollars a week unemployment or something like that. So they may have received assistance elsewhere, being self-employed. Certainly could be a local franchise. On the ineligible side, we talk about national or corporate franchises or businesses not being eligible, but a local franchise here could. That's different than what the state or the county has. And then perhaps you'd want to consider a maximum income of the business. Some city programs have that as well. The county and the state program do not, but that's something that we've seen. So any questions on this? Maybe I'll pause here or I can keep going, do the ineligible types?
Did we look at some 501(c)(3)'s, for instance, like Experience Burnsville?
Yes, so.
What is that in there?
On ineligible, we have nonprofits listed as an ineligible because the council can give priority or direct allocations to nonprofits.
So they're eligible, but not under the small business grant program that we're designing, but a different program that we could design as a use of those funds?
Under the CARES fund.
Yes.
Under the CARES fund.
It's just a separate type.
You could allow them here too if you, if you wanted to. I haven't seen anything that says you couldn't, but they would have to compete and they may not get the dollars. I think other organizations have prioritized them as they want those dollars to go to the service providers in their community or those that have helped other businesses so that they've, they've carved them out separate. Other ineligible businesses, businesses that derive their income from passive investments. We talked about this. There's some further clarifying language here. I think that's come up since your last discussion. That's without operational ties to an operating business. So it's just clarifying a little bit more exactly what does that passive investment mean. And then businesses that have speculative activities that are based on fluctuations, oh, that's supposed to be price, not proof, fluctuations in price rather than the normal course of trade. And Councilmember Workman talked about day trading last time. So this, this would not allow those types of folks to, to qualify. Any illegal businesses, businesses that have already received funding from this, this CARES bucket, whether it be the federal or, excuse me, the state level or the county level. National or corporate chains, that's something that would be unique to us. That is not in the county or the deed requirement anymore. Businesses that were default fire prior to COVID kicking in, which is our February 29th. And then Councilmember Schultz brought this up during your discussion, asking about businesses that have closed where this funding could potentially help them reopen. Can we give them funds? And we have not seen anything that says we cannot. So if we want to, we could allow that, allow funding for that. I would suggest that there be a timeframe of when they reopen, right? Do we just give somebody money without any parameters?
Absolutely.
So I just throw out that they open within 21 days because if they're not, if that doesn't help them, there's an opportunity perhaps to recollect those funds and reallocate them before the November 15th deadline. So we're responsible to make sure these funds are put to meeting the federal criteria. So, and our local criteria. And then uses that the county indeed have on their, their list but are not here would be those that prohibit adult uses, primarily gambling and lending businesses. I think it was less than 50% of income derived from those two uses was considered acceptable. Pyramid sales, thinking, we all kind of know what those are, and those that have received small business emergency loan or other locally funded relief. So the county says if they receive local funding, then they wouldn't qualify for the, the county CARES program. So, so those are other considerations, just throwing out there that are in deed and county's program. Any questions on that slide? I know there's a lot here, but.
Do we know how many people have received here in the city? Will, will we be able to get a list from the counties, state or agencies?
Here's what I know on the numbers. We have, for businesses with 50 employees or less, that will cover 95% of the businesses in the city.
Yeah, that is. That's mostly what we have in Burnsville.
If we have a, a revenue limit of a million dollars, this is of sales, 67.2% of our businesses have that. If we up the number to five million, it's about 92%. We could take that number out altogether. Just that's what was in some other programs, wanted to bring it here for discussion, but if that gives you an idea of where we're at. I also did hear today, sorry, I have a bunch of notes because I was in a bunch of meetings today. Let's see here. It was mentioned at the county board meeting today. Let's see here. This might help answer that question too. Deed, deed received 29,000 applications for their $60 million and they only have enough to fund 6,000. So there are 24,000 businesses in the state that applied for that pot of money and are not able to get it.
Yeah.
So, and that's what these criteria primarily that we're talking about, you know, 50 employees or less, $10,000 a business. Some administrative considerations that have come up with you and the EDC, keep it simple. I think the county changed their model from what they were originally talking about and to keep it simple and follow the deed criteria as much as possible. Get the funds out quickly. When you start to put the timeline to this, we need council to take action on something. we need council to take action on something no later than like your August 18th meeting because we start to back into challenges with getting this money spent. Up to $10,000 per business is what we're talking about. Seems to be a common practice. And an open window with a lottery is easier to administer rather than review a bunch of applications and spend all that time and money reviewing them and first come, first served. So having a third-party administrator is preferred. I've reached out to the CDA. They just approved their contract with a company called Next Stage at about 5 o'clock today. So they've got their contractor in place, and we're looking to see what that partnership could look like. In our previous discussions with them, they had noted that it's possible if our criteria are the same as the county. If our criteria are different, then that could be challenging potentially for us. Next Stage told the county that they are not seeking any more work to process these CARES dollars for cities or counties. They're doing Ramsey County, Pennington County, Scott County, and now Dakota County is their last one. So we may have our in with them if we are in alignment with what the county is saying, unless they tell us we can have different criteria. If not, we may be looking for a different way to administer this. So not saying we can't. I don't want to put pressure on you. I just want you to know where we're at and where the vendor is at and what he said today. And the county wants to make sure their contractor has the capacity to spend their dollars first, right? So that's their priority understandably. So where does that fall in? So this is all just coming together this afternoon. We need to figure out where we're at. Oh, and by the way, our deadline to spend our money is two weeks short of what the county has.
Yeah.
So we're the last to get the money and the first that have to spend it. So our timeline is even more pressure to make decisions, get a vendor, and get this going as soon as possible.
They have until November 30th, and we have November 15th as.
Yeah, December 1st and November 15th, yeah.
Good news is our administrative costs aren't eligible expense. So to administer this with a third party isn't gonna, shouldn't cost us anything. And then as part of our process here, I mean, it would be ideal if we could have time to check in with the chamber, come back to the EDC. We'd like to do that. We may not be able to do that given the timeline. So timing is key, and we'll certainly make sure that those folks are informed of what's going on, so. So I talked a little bit about the potential timeline. If we get something going, we could have an application period in September and then review documentation or closing in October, early November. This is similar to what the county's timeline is. The, the board talked today about upping that schedule on their end as much as possible, which of course would help us, so. And there's my explanation. We gotta get something before you. We need a decision on the dollar amount you want to put in this so we can use our resources in AE2S to help us with marketing and find a third-party vendor. We do have a couple of options, and we know our preferred route is to work with the county, but that, that may not be an option based on what I heard today. With that, I will stand for questions, and I know Mr. Folsted and Mr. McElroy are here as well.
Okay. Kara?
Before we have too heavy of a discussion, I would like to hear from our guests because I think they're gonna bring us information that's better for the discussion.
Did you want to wait then, Dan K? Did you want to wait?
I turned off.
I saw that. That's why I asked. Yes, we'll, we'll have, Dan, you went right here at this table, and then we'll have Brad come. So the table that.
Is it here or a table?
Presenter table?
That's fine.
I brought some handouts, but I think we know each other. My name's Dan McElroy. My wife and I have lived here for, it will be 43 years in November. And we have our wedding anniversary and our move into the house date are the same week, so. I'm here on behalf of Experience Burnsville, so I appreciate the mention of that. Just a minor correction, it's a 501(c)(6), so it's nonprofit, but it is not a charity. It's a business that you all established in cooperation with the community 32 years ago.
Yeah.
There's some facts and figures in the letter that's from me on behalf of our executive committee. We will take it to the whole board, but we don't have an opportunity to do that for a few more weeks. Several of you are on that board. And I'm open as to whether, if, if the council thinks that using some CARES Act money to kind of protect our capacity to impact tourism and our industry is better as a business or in a separate program. We're not fussy about that. But hospitality has just been hammered in our community. We have a couple of things I want to bring to your attention. The collection of lodging tax was fairly normal in January and February. In March, it was down 50% from a year ago. In May and June, it's down about 65%. I'm anecdotally told that June may be a point or two better, but not much. People are simply not traveling. The things that, what we think of as drivers, Valley Fair, softball tournaments, weddings, even memorial services when people pass, they're simply not happening. We can do things to help. We are extremely good at social media and paid Facebook advertising and a variety of things. But our board had to take some actions to slow the expenditure of reserves. We've cut our payroll by about, or our staffing rather, by about 40%. We slowed down other spending. But based on today's expectations of revenue, we're gonna dig into significantly into our reserves. As this rebounds in 2021, I think we, the, the board has an obligation to be sure that we have the, the capacity to, to promote and market and to do our work. Another issue I want to bring to your attention because tax basis hasn't changed since I set where you are. Our nine hotels, eight of them stayed open during this, one, the Hampton Inn, closed, but it will reopen. They're trying to, working now to get it ready to reopen, I hope. A little different situation in that they own two hotels across the parking lot from each other. So they concentrated the volume at the Fairfield for a while. But those, our nine hotels have an assessed value of $28 million. They pay $750,000 roughly in property taxes. When they go to look at their property tax, these sophisticated companies base what revenue they, or what value the property has based to a great extent on revenue. And if revenue continues to be down 50 to 60%, I'm worried about those assessed values. For your information, they range from a low value of about $1.5 million to a high of about $5.5 million. The property taxes from about $45,000 to about $150,000. They're moderately significant source of revenue. I worry about that.
Yeah.
And so we would ask you to consider having Experience Burnsville eligible in one program or another. We can put together whatever application is necessary. It's, I hope, helpful to do good things for the community.
Thank you.
And I'd be happy to take questions, comments.
One of the things, it is very important, Experience Burnsville, because it markets our destination.
It does. Our, our hotels had 200 employees before the downturn. We don't know exactly, but it's much less than that. We also provide significant support to the restaurant industry and to the retail industry and to our attractions like Buck Hill and, and other places. We need the capacity to do that.
Yes, and thank you for the partnership with the tour flavor.
We love partnerships and we love to promote.
Because you're a partner with us on this. So thank you very much for that.
It will be all over website, Instagram, Facebook, maybe even a little Twitter.
Yeah. Dan K?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. McElroy, for coming in and speaking. Do you know, what is the total gross revenues for the CDB? Maybe Dan, just either Dan.
I'd have to.
Is it 3?
300 and some thousand.
It's like 340 or something.
In a good year, we might hit 400.
Just, just my quick math forecast, you know, you've lost over 50 grand in the last three months, and it looks like, you know, it could be, could be as much as 150 by the end of the year.
That's our concern.
And that's pretty dramatic. That's having a devastating impact on the CBB. It's gonna render them difficult to do, achieve and do anything and maintain any kind of staff, even our executive director. So, you know, does it, I know every little bit helps, but if we were to put a grant program in and we included the CBB and, and it received 10,000, what kind of impact does that have when you have that size of loss?
It simply slows the extent. Fortunately, coming into this, we had fairly significant reserves, right? Almost $100,000 in reserves. Any grant that we're able to qualify for will slow the pace at which we're drawing down reserves. We're also spending less.
Right.
You know, we laid off one person entirely. We cut another person to half time. We've cut down other expenditures. We're looking at office options. The people who make up your board are paying attention.
Thank you very much.
Dan K?
Thank you for coming, talking to us about this. What do you envision the grant money would be used for at the CDB?
I want to see the criteria, but it could be to offset, if we're able to use it for payroll, we would look at doing some of that. If not, it would offset expenses we have for things like website maintenance, Facebook expenditures, paid Facebook advertising, the thing, kind of work we do so that we wouldn't be taking some of those expenses out of reserves. But we'll need to look carefully at the criteria.
Thank you.
Payroll, rent, lease payments, we can spend those things.
Yeah, absolutely for that.
The things. Thank you, Janet.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Thank you so much, Dan, for coming in, really, and thank you for.
Well, I would normally stay to listen to the rest of this, but I'm trying to help my wife keep the deer from eating all her lilies. And so I'm gonna go home and do lily wars.
Okay, thank you so much.
I have a coyote in my neighborhood we can send over.
I had to explain to my wife that shooting the deer was unlawful.
That's why I said I had a coyote we could send over.
If I could just get our chief to capture it.
I hear from your neighbors, you have a lot of deer there this year, and they're doing a lot of damage to a lot of the gardens and hostas.
Yeah, we have a lot of deer in our neighborhood spelled two different ways.
So Brad, welcome.
Brady.
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 Thank you.
Sorry, sorry, Brady. Brady, welcome. And you have some information for us?
Yeah, I, I just, to echo a little bit first, Brady Folsted, I'm on the EDC. And to echo Dan a little bit, had a lot of interface with a lot of the CARES Act programs at work. I, I work in banking, and 501(c)(6) organizations were locked out of all of the CARES Act funding, from my understanding.
Yeah.
So our chambers of commerce and all of the different groups that do a lot for, to drive business in the community were not eligible. So please take them into consideration, either through direct allocation or through eligibility to the grant program. I guess one thing, as, as we talked about this and a little bit of my experience with it, there's, there's been a lot of different parameters floated out there. I would encourage you all to keep it very, very simple on the application. To equate it to another program out there, the Paycheck Protection Program, people are eligible up to 10 or 20 million dollars. And the application is two pages long. So please don't overwrite the application as we're going through that.
So Brady, you're saying one page or less?
One page or less is, is likely a good idea. The, the other thing that I would say is, is speed is probably the most important factor in this entire thing. If we wait until September to launch it, I believe that is going to be far, far too late. I, I realize it would be really nice, since it's a lot of money, to talk about it a whole bunch of times, but it's just not going to be in the cards. If, that I, personally, I would like to see the program launched within two weeks. I, I know that that is difficult, but I think if we have a very simple application process and a very delineated way in which the applicants are chosen, I think that will be easy. The others, and, and again, I think it's more about the recipient knowing they're going to receive it than maybe not necessarily getting the check absolutely immediately. I think that way we could also limit the amount of administrative expense. A lot of talk about consultants. I think consultants are gonna slow us down and just muck the program up entirely. And every dollar we don't spend on a consultant, we can give to a small business in Burnsville. I think that's super important. As we look at things, different priorities, everybody has an industry classification code. If it starts with a 72, you're in the hospitality industry. That's gonna cover you in the restaurant and the hotel industry. If there's gonna be a carve-out, I think that would be a wonderful spot to do that. They've been, as Mr. McElroy said, probably the most affected out of anybody out there. And then as a council, I would just encourage everybody to, you know, muster as many of those CARES funds as we can for this. It's, it's one of the times I think that we as a community, there is a legitimate need to get the funds into the hands of these business owners. And if we can be a city that is shown to care this deeply about their, their residents, I think that's something that we should do. The businesses, yes, they're businesses, yes, they're for-profit enterprises, but they're also amenities, and they're also reasons why people move here. And we need to take care of those people and be seen as a community that takes care of their business community. With that, I would, I would go on a first-come, first-served basis. If I was to recommend something, and if there's going to be a carve-out, I'd do it as a percentage and maybe just catch those up at the end. So if there's a carve-out for hospitality, if there's a carve-out for, you know, some of our minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses, something like that, let allocate a percentage of funds and.
Self-employed?
If, if you want a special allocation for self-employed, whatever it is, just make it easy and make it first-come, first-served. I would, I would up the million-dollar cap on revenue. I think you're gonna see some of your hotels and some of your restaurants that are going to exceed that, and you'll, you'll lock them out of a nominal grant program. And probably up the 50 people, 50 employee number as well. Just looking through the data that the SBA provided with the PPP program, there's a bunch of businesses in Burnsville that have in excess of 50 employees. And a quick glance at the list shows several of them in the hospitality world, so. With that, that's all I've got for you for recommendations.
Okay. Any questions for Brady? Dan, Dan K?
Thank you, Mr. Folsted, for coming in on relatively short notice. And I appreciate your comments on our Public Policy Committee with the chamber last Friday morning that, that really led to this. I'm curious, are you familiar with what Lakeville chose to do?
From what I understand, their program opens up the 27th of July. It's $10,000. It's first-come, first-served. If I, I, I don't know the exact allocation of funds, but I believe it to be between half a million and $600,000. I'm, I'm not sure exactly off the top of my head.
They're, July, the key, key point there, they're doing it in-house, and they're gonna launch it quick.
Yep.
Very quickly, so good point. I'm, we've, in all our prior discussions with the city manager Lee, I've been heavily in favor of getting the efficiencies of joining the county and et cetera, et cetera. However, I'm more and more concerned today about the timetable and the overload and our position, their priority, et cetera, and wondering if, looking at the Lakeville model, it might be a better option for us to at least examine and see if we can pull it off. Because I, I think it is gonna end up launching it faster. It'll lower the cost, and we can get the help out quicker.
I, I would agree. I think the efficiency it would create would be for the city, but not for our business owners if we teamed up with the county.
Melanie?
Madam Mayor, I can actually speak to the, the framework of the Lakeville program if the council's interested.
Yeah.
Looks like they have allocated, let's see, the criteria is that businesses have between 1 and 25 FTE, less than 1 million in annual revenues, and have been in business since December 15th, 2019. Applications will open on July 27th for two weeks, awards on a first-come, first-serve, and they are doing an internal administration. They also indicate, well, it's the first program, business assistance program that Lakeville has developed for COVID-19, so.
They do have some carve-outs in there, as I, I believe, ineligible home-based businesses. They, they kind of followed a lot of the guide that was coming from some of the cities and LMC and others in the county that you had relayed once before, so we might take a different approach to some of these things. But they, they were able to get it going and, and start it up and, and start taking applications on the 27th of this month. Is that it?
Yeah, that's what, that's what it sounds like.
Yeah, that's, that's what we understand.
That's impressive.
Speed doesn't lead to perfection with these programs, but it does help.
Yeah. See, my concern is that when I look, look at self-employed and home-owned business, some of the photographers that lost a lot. some of the photographers that lost a lot of business, like Rod Omen, who has been talking to me and messaging me. And so he's lost a lot of business with the no weddings, no graduations and all of that. So, you know, a lot of photographers, home-based business, self-employed, been very successful in the community, but have been just devastated. And then we have Cheers Pablo, just opened not too long ago. You know, and she's self-employed, and I think she subcontracted for her artist to come in and do that, but hasn't been able to be open. So these are the small businesses that we need to make sure that we think about. And I like what you're saying, Brady, about making, because we're very informal for work sessions, so I hope you don't mind when I use people's, but when we have council meetings, I'm always very formal, so, but.
Well, thank you.
Vince?
I guess I was just ready to put some things forward based on what we just heard from Brad and Dan.
He'll be Brad forever now. Thanks, Dan.
I think if, to the point that if we can make this as simple as possible, one or two pages, I would hope we could handle this internally instead of relying on a consultant. But we have to make sure that it is done as simple as possible. I think we're all in agreement of allowing home-based businesses. And I don't think there, we need to put a minimum of employees on there if it's an owner-operator. They're just as impacted with or without employees, and I think about, like you said, photographers and hairstylists and others. I don't think we need to put a cap on FTEs if the business was impacted. And in our hospitality industry, they shouldn't be knocked off of the consideration for this. I'm also agree with Brady on the revenues, the caps. I don't know, I mean, if you were to go as high as $5 million, like Jenny said, that takes up 92% of Burnsville businesses. So I think that's a fairly simple criteria. And then, for the sake of speed, I like the first-come, first-served rather than a lottery. As far as timing goes, the only problem I have with getting this done as soon as possible is I would want to put out enough time to get communication out.
For people to hear about it.
And understand it. So I don't know if you could shoot for, you know, August 1st or, you know, the second week in August, if that would be too soon or not soon enough.
Yeah, I agree with you. People need to know that we're having this because of, yeah.
But I agree, we shouldn't probably kick it to September, October either. So that's, I just wanted to throw that out there now, so everybody knows from my-
We need to use all of our channel, media channels to amplify this. Yeah. You have anything else?
That's all I have unless we continue to evolve the conversation.
Okay. Dan G?
I agree with Vince. I think we should keep it simple, look forward quickly. I know they already have a timeline on August 18th, I think, for a final decision, if we can somehow move it up. And I've thought from the beginning that we are capable of administering this program in-house here. We certainly have a finance staff that knows what the heck they're doing with all of this and-
And it's a short one.
And economic development people that know what's going on, too, so.
It's a short project.
We still have to kind of figure out where we're going to be on the monies, because unless it's changed, it's still about $500,000, still going just to the city unless there's been a change in how that's, how we're able to allocate, which is going to leave a whole boatload of money out there. What are we going to do with it?
Yeah, well, I'm going to go to Melanie to answer that question, because we've got a whole lot of stuff that we need to make sure that the citizens of Burnsville are covered, that the city is covered.
So Madam Mayor and Council, from the allocation perspective, perhaps the council wants to consider a percentage. You know, 5% of the allocation would be $236,000 for this program. You know, and you can consider that as a framework.
That's way too low.
Yeah, I think it's too low.
I think we got it.
But point being is you could pick a percentage, or you could pick a dollar amount. We don't have the full allocation of funds, you know, kind of parsed out to where they would go. But I know this is a priority of the council, so it's helpful to get some guidance of what are you looking for for this? And then we can craft the rest of the program or the rest of the CARES dollars accordingly.
Okay, Karen?
That's, I mean, pardon, but that seems backwards. What we should know is what the city needs, and then we know what's left over, rather than what the council wants to designate to this fund, and then the city uses the rest. That's, I don't know, that's how I'm thinking about it. For the fund itself, I would strongly urge that we not do first-come, first-served and that we do a lottery, because first-come, first-served means that larger businesses who have a staff, who can dedicate to filling this out, businesses who are more closely connected to persons in the city that can get the word out to them, they are first in the queue. And I would rather this be a lottery on that. The other thing is, I think it should go up to $20,000 per. I mean, I will throw that out there again. I think $10,000 is too little. I think either you really give someone a boost so that they can make it, or you don't. So I am looking at a higher amount. So those are my two thoughts on that, three actually, but there you go.
Dan K?
Question just on the, you said up to 20. I would agree. How do we, where's the, where's the starting? In other words, 10 to 20, 5 to 20, and what are your thoughts on how that would get matched up with the application?
Keep it simple, Jenny.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it's eligible cost. So if their eligible costs are $4,000, that's all they can prove, that's all that they would get.
You could have a cap, and the cap could be $20,000, but they would have to provide the, whatever's eligible.
Okay, are you on that $20,000, because there are those that need that $20,000?
And some may not, but it's only what's eligible.
First, I just want to, I want to bounce off of council member Workman's. I agree 100%. I would take away the employee, the revenue that, you know, maybe you go up to 100 employees or whatever, but I don't think that's the issue. That's trying to take a limited amount of dollars. We do have a limited amount of dollars, but we haven't set that yet. And saying, we're only going to give this up to this point, and then everybody else is just, sorry. I think we can help more businesses, and I guess it's all depending on what the dollar amount that we choose to allocate. But I agree with, we don't need to put certain parameters or exclusions in there. If they are harmed by COVID and they're based in Burnsville, let them apply and see what, how, the case they make for the hardship and what it is that they, the impact. You know, to your point, Brady, that classification code of 72, I believe it was all hospitality?
Yeah, it started 72, 72000.
So we probably, I mean, I personally would be okay with trying to come up with some allocation that is set aside for the bad industry, because they have always been the most hardest hit, by a mile. It affected everybody, but wow, did it really hammer those businesses. So I don't know how we would do that, but I guess then I'm just going to, there's very few exclusions that I can think of, passive gambling, property management maybe, but certainly not some of those other ones. I think they're fine to come through. I'm personally thinking at least a million out of this 4.7, and here's where my numbers come from. 4.7, I think by the end of the year, we're probably going to be spending about a million. We have a half a million, we know now, that's forecast, but if we allocate a million out of that for our city recovery of our costs, then that leaves 3.7. If we put a million into this program, at least, personally, I would go higher than that, actually, a million five, then the remaining goes into the public safety payroll, which goes into the rest of our city budget, right? Because that's going to impact shifting within the organization, because it now helps pay for public safety payroll, which helps other things around the entire budget. So personally, and I look at Lakeville, too. They went, they just went with the guidance. The guidance was 10%, and that's what they did, $487,000.
Is that what they're putting out there that they're going to give?
Yeah, their number is a factor based on the recommendation. So look at the number of businesses in Lakeville versus the number of businesses in Burnsville. We are a much bigger center of commerce. We have a ton of retail and restaurant, and they were the ones that were hurt the most. So our number should be double theirs just on the basis of, we have a lot more businesses that we need to help. So I think we have to think of it as, what's the potential need out there? What type of city we are when it comes to retail and hospitality? And put a number forward that's going to really, truly get to as many people as we possibly can. I would love to see it meet all of the applicant's needs, but we don't know, we don't even know what that is. Yeah, it might not even total that. We might get applications that won't even total a million. We don't know. The anecdotal data that City Manager Lee mentioned in some other instances, that there was less than the amount of interest expected, I kind of think we're going to get more and will probably do a better job of marketing it that is available.
Melanie?
I can speak to that. I'm glad you brought that up, Councilmember Keely. I chatted with some of my colleagues who, prior to the CARES money, put a program like this in place, and they said the money moved quickly. There was interest, so, yeah. There was, these were $10,000 grants that went out the door in a week or two timeframe.
That D data, pardon me, Madam Mayor, that D 29, 29,000 apps, and they only had enough money for $6,000. To me, that's what I would have expected to hear, you know, from even the other cities. But as you're saying now, follow-up, it really is getting out there and it's getting absorbed. Thank you.
Yeah, so Melanie, I know that in one of your updates, COVID updates, and when we were looking at the CARES Act dollars and all of that, and you had some estimates, but the other thing is that covering public safety, all of public safety, I think one of the things, if you're looking at a million dollars for us to put into this program, is what I heard you say, that-
At least that is.
Yeah, so I, you know, if we do that, then we're left with 3.7, and I know that doesn't cover everything that we're going to be doing, but I, because I'm looking at what we're doing now for 2020, but I'm also looking for 2021. And so for me, when I'm looking at the budget, it's not just what we're doing now. We have to make, really make sure we're looking at 2021, too. So I think the sooner you can give us an estimate, but I'm hearing, Dan G, a million dollars is been put on the table. And then, and Vince?
Say a million is comfortable, and I don't know if there's an opportunity to pivot up an additional half if the drives-
I want to take care of Burnsville, of the city first.
Can we talk about that? I want to get real clear about this take-care-of-Burnsville. The CARES Act funding has been very clear about what it can cover, right? And it's a half a million. We're not even going to get to a million dollars in taking care of our expenses. The additional dialogue came around, well, we gave cities and counties and states more money than they had hard eligible costs. So now they've talked about, now they've evolved the discussion, and they've said, okay, now you can maybe cover this, and now you can do this with it. So it's a moving target, right? But it did start from this very clear, these are qualified expenses, which we didn't have a whole lot of, right? Now we're getting into where there's more that can qualify. But we're getting outside the context of those hard costs directly attributed to the COVID for the city, outside of revenues, of course, that's never been covered. And so I want to be careful when we say a million dollars wouldn't take care of our city needs. Now we're talking about the remaining money, which we're still going to end up with quite a bit, I think, that's going to help the city in additional ways. But it's outside of the context of what were your actual hard costs as a result of COVID? Not revenue loss, but hard costs, right? So I think we've covered ourselves in that way.
Yeah, and I don't think we've gotten all of those numbers from Melanie.
Yeah, no, Madam Mayor, this is, this is good discussion, so we get a sense of where the council is on this program. We know this is an important priority for you. The challenge that we have, certainly we've got direct expenses, that's without a doubt, those are eligible costs. The challenge that we've had, frankly, since March, has been, pretty much all of our staff time has been allocated to COVID. So those payroll costs, they've been dedicated to COVID, which means other things have not gotten done for the benefit of the city. So I don't want that to get lost in the discussion. That being said, we are frustrated that we can't get further clarification, and I'm looking at Jenny Rhodey down there, that she's doing yeoman's work on trying to tease that out and see what, based on what we understand today, what is that number going to look like? It is a very unusual circumstance where we have money first and guidance is trickling in. I mean, it is, and we understand the urgency. Jenny said we're the last ones to get the money, and we first ones have to turn it back in. So this is good to understand the framework, the small business program. There's a support, what I'm hearing is for about a million dollars for that. I think we understand the criteria, but we'll walk through it before we're done. From a bucket perspective, and that's my technical term, do we expect that there's support for some of these other uses, Experience Burnsville or whatnot, to fall under that bucket, that $1 million, or is- Is that, that's what I'm trying to get a sense of. Okay, I'm seeing different feedback, so I'll just want to look to the council for clarification.
I'll share my thoughts when you're ready on that.
I'm done.
So Dan?
Well, I, you know, I think in trying to formulate a program that can meet the majority of what we believe the need is out there, I don't know exactly what the nonprofits group would all be included in.
But it's a business, the 501(c)(6) is a business.
Yeah, no, I'm actually carving out and allocating money on a different deal. I would suggest we put $200,000 aside for nonprofits and another 50 aside for the CBB and the Chamber, so it's a million, 250. But that 200 is for the nonprofit group, you know, I call it the, you know, the 360s communities and other types of nonprofits.
No, they're covered. They're already covered under the CARES Act.
We didn't detail how much out of that, you're saying we don't need to be concerned with them at all now?
No, because they are covered under the CARES Act.
We could do a direct, we could do a direct allocation, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking, yeah. Having the, sorry.
There's a variety of sources of the CARES Act, and counties and states and cities have funds, I believe. Jenny, you can speak to the 360s question.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, so since you brought 360s specifically as an example, they could qualify as the business under here that we give. They could be in the pot and apply like everybody else, or you can do a direct allocation to cover their COVID expenses. You could also give a group like $360 for rental assistance and utility assistance. And that also would cover the administrative costs for them to do that work. So they would fall into kind of two categories, them as an example. But there's nothing laid out in our CARES money that has a carve-out specifically for them, unless you tell us that's what you want.
Because they're a 501(c)(3), but the Chamber and the Experience Burnsville are 501(c)(6) or c)(8).
It's, I guess, yes. The difference is, is 501(c)(3) is a charity, of course, and then a 501(c)(6) is a nonprofit, they're not necessarily a charitable organization. Just wanted to clarify, based on what I'm hearing for discussion. Number two on the top 10 list we have here says, "Private for-profit business located and operated in Burnsville." So if we're going to allow these different organizations to be under this and not a direct allocation, we definitely need to take a look at that.
Yeah, Jenny?
I was just going to add, the type of nonprofit they are is irrelevant, because we get to decide what the criteria are. So if we say nonprofit, they're nonprofit. And then if it's helpful, I'm happy to walk through and redline this on the fly, so we all have clarity, or I can bring it back to your council meeting next Tuesday.
So then would we be bringing houses of worship into the conversation in addition?
Say-
Is it not, would a church or mosque or synagogue be included into the consideration?
That's where it starts to get, yeah.
I guess that's a point of clarification. I would be looking for if we're going to go down the nonprofit route.
And you raise a good point, because once you say that, then everybody's going to say they've been heavily impacted.
You're picking winners and losers with a direct allocation, to a certain extent.
I think, Madam Mayor? Jenny, do you recall the amount that Dakota County allocated to the rental assistance? Did they decide to ultimately go through with that? I want to say it was about $2 million, but I could be wrong.
Today, they added an addition- Today, they added an additional $2 million to funds I think they had already allocated for rental assistance.
Okay, thank you.
And if I can, while I have the mic, I think it's fantastic that you think we can do this in-house. But I need to tell you, from a staffing standpoint, we are down one person in economic development. Our economic development coordinator is no longer with the city. This is going to be very tough for us. I mean, we can coordinate it with the help of others, and maybe it's not the company that the county is doing. There's other ideas that I've talked to Melanie about. But I just want to set expectations that we don't have the capacity to go back and do underwriting for $1 million of these grants as quickly as you want. But we will work to meet your expectations with the resources that we have. When I say resources, our network, whatever that looks like and who those folks could be. But it may not be Regina and I or Jenny Rhodey reviewing these. We just don't have the capacity to do that type of work in-house. I just want to make sure your expectations are clear.
So over the weekend, and I shared this with Melanie, that Ellers have people who knows the CARES Act, and they can do this, and they can help. And so I sent that, so CARE Act's Advice for Minnesota Communities. And so I forwarded that to Melanie, and I said, hey, you know, they're our consultants, and they can do this.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I've already had conversations with them and sent an email today after I heard the discussion at the CDA Board. So we're already down that road. There's another options and ideas that Melanie and I have talked about. So I just want to make sure that we're all kind of on the same page. When we say in-house, what does that mean?
Well, if you need the help, and it can be you, then, because if the goal is get it out early, then you need the help, and it's eligible cost. Okay, Brady, I'm going to wait, because Kara had a question, and I'll come back to you. Kara?
I noticed Jam Nick is not here, and he might be a great person to assist with that. Because I always like to volunteer people who aren't presently here at the meeting. But I mean, just generally speaking, he, you know, he would be very familiar with this type of thing. He's, this is a lot of the help that attorneys do for cities, especially in this type of thing. So he might also be a really good resource of processing this on through.
Now you, Brady?
If the application is simple enough, we shouldn't have to have the city attorney review the application and review them. If it's simple enough, we should be able to even hire temp staffing to determine if they meet the eligibility criteria. And there's not much review other than eligibility, from what I've been hearing.
Okay, Melanie?
So Madam Mayor and council, not to be a wet blanket, but we are responsible for the appropriate allocation of those funds. It is incumbent upon us. So we, we had to kind of take an ownership role when we put these funds out. So there is maybe a couple layers that we want to.
There's a single audit on this.
There will be a single audit on this.
There will be a single audit, and we need to make sure we have it done right, because it's a single audit. It will be. So Jenny, and I want to make sure this can be, because I've been thinking, this is a single audit.
Madam Mayor, that's, that's what I was going to say. In the process that the consultant next stage reviewed with the county commissioners this afternoon, they talked about auditing and dotting the i's and crossing the t's. And so we do have to meet fiduciary responsibilities at the federal level.
It's federal money, and it takes a single audit. I've been on phone calls, not only with the White House, but also with, and I think Jenny, you were on one of those calls when we had to go through how this is going to be done, and the criteria is that we need to make sure as cities to not be crossed ways with the federal government.
And Madam Mayor, I mean, we want this to be done, right? Because we don't want to run the risk of having to pay the money back. Think what that can look like.
Oh, my God.
That's why we're trying to make sure we have folks engaged and helping us along the way, so we get this right the first time.
And I want to do it right, because when auditors come in next spring, we better have it done right. Okay, Melanie?
Well, I just wanted, if there's further conversation by the council, we want to make sure we circle back on what the, what the outgoing expectations are. So a week from now, because again, we do have timing as an issue, so.
And you usually have this on our agenda, so the COVID and CARES Act, so we can do that. But I would say just look at the million dollars first before we look at going over that. Because at that time, you and our staff would have a better understanding of what our, all of our costs might be. Hopefully, maybe.
That's, that's the goal. That's the goal. Yeah, Jenny's working on that.
I'm going to go to Vince, and then back to you, Dan Keely.
Jenny, do we, do we know, based on the meeting today, what the anticipated cost of a consultant for administering this is? Did they discuss that at all?
Councilmember Workman, I have seen documentation on that, and there's a flat fee just to engage, and then dollar amounts for reviewing and documenting. They're setting up, so the process that they're doing is setting up an online application, keeping it simple. It is very few questions. I think maybe it's going to be 10 or 11 questions. But there's an online platform. We don't have that right now, right? So if that's what we're going to do, we got to figure that out, and that's going to take some time and some expertise, so. And then their costs are built into that for creating that online platform. Even though they've done this for other counties, it's specific to Dakota County, what their criteria are isn't exactly what the other counties are. Then there's the whole process of flushing it out. If they receive state money, county money, somebody's got to check that out, and then do all the documentation on the financial need, the number of employees, Secretary of State, good status checks. All that kind of stuff has to be done. They did suggest that the funds come from the entity itself. Of course, a check coming from the city of Burnsville instead of a third-party consultant always goes over better, you know, different things like that. Depending on the dollar amount that the county was going to put into it, it looked to be between 3% and 4% of the total funds allocated.
So I think by next week, you'll give us some more information.
Madam Mayor, what I can do is clean up what we've talked about here, to bring a program that doesn't have any questions, but finalizes what I've heard from you today, keeping it simple, taking off as many parameters as we can. And then hopefully, we'll have some more information on the administrative side and some timelines and that kind of stuff. And we'll get more information from the CDA, too. I had sent them an email yesterday asking them, but I'm for sure they were waiting until they had their discussion at their board today to get back to us.
The other question, Jenny, that I'd like for you to ask the CDA, will they also then honor Burnsville businesses on their allotment? Even though it'll be, go be.
Our money would stay in Burnsville.
Our money stays in Burnsville.
Without a doubt.
But if a business from Burnsville then also applies to the county, will they be eligible for that?
Yes, but they can't have both.
They can't have both.
They can get it in two ways, both.
They can apply to both, but they can't get both, right?
They can't get both.
One is qualified, the other, if they receive one.
But that's, because if we have 95% of our businesses, just, I'm looking where, if they, they can get it from us, or else they can get it from the county, is what I'm getting at.
Our qualifications sound like they're going to be different, so we'll actually have more people who will not be qualified to apply to the county, who will be able to from us.
Yeah, but those who can qualify with the county can.
Right, because we're less restricted.
Yeah, but those who can meet the county's qualification can do that. So we're looking at two buckets where our businesses can, yeah. Okay, Dan Keely?
Well, I just want to, I'll just restate my recommendation is to start with a million. I agree with Councilmember Workman and Councilmember Gussis in that we need to be able to pivot and add a little more. We should be able to do that, but, and then set aside a quarter million, a quarter million to deal with our hospital, 360, et cetera, carve-outs, and our CBB and Chamber. Yep.
Well, let's, I'd say, let's start with a million and let the staff come back and let us know. But I understand the carve-outs. Okay, Melanie?
Oh, no, Madam Mayor and council, I was just thinking through the timeline of this. The state program is already closed. That closed on July 2nd. So that was a disqualifying program, I guess, one or the other. Then the county looks like they'll be a little bit ahead of us, perhaps, on their program. And so then we would be the last program that would be eligible for the Burnsville businesses. So just from a timing perspective.
So I would like for us also then to really do a good marketing campaign to let our people know that the county also has, and their qualifications. So our business know that they can also apply there as well as apply here. So if they miss here and can get there, or if there's two different criterias and they get a better shot at the county, that it's there. So we market both.
We definitely need to get a lot of marketing invested, because communicating this is a big deal. And that was, that came out in the Public Policy Committee. Couple, couple, two or three people brought out, it's really critical for us to market to make sure everybody's aware that it's even, and where do they go, right?
On every social platform.
And our, every touchpoint. I've got my.
It's you.
Is it okay? I just jumped in, but I wanted to, the other thing is, I like the online. I'm curious what Lakeville did, if they're doing online or if they're doing a forum. Because at the outset of this, I personally experienced, and Brady noted to me in conversation, that almost every web-based application was crashing under the weight of so many hitting all at once. So how can we design this simple, but ensure that that's not going to be a problem?
That's going to be using someone else's platform, because we don't have that.
We don't have the.
We don't have that. So I can appreciate, I can appreciate the online component. I think that's probably a good way to go. But we'll have to look a little bit more into that actual administration component.
I'm curious what, I didn't catch this part of what Lakeville did, is if they're going to do it through their website, or do it fax or drop off your application at City Hall type of thing, but.
I don't know that I've got that level of detail.
Or scan and email it in, right? Can be emailed in, can be faxed in, it can be dropped off in person.
Okay, Kara?
I, I know that a lot of people really, I understand from an administration process why you like online, because you can pull that information, and it goes into a nice report and all that kind of stuff. But for speed of getting things in, for ease of administering, maybe we kick it old-school and do paper.
Yeah, Melanie?
Well, Madam Mayor, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember, I'm sorry.
Not a problem. And, you know, and I mention that just because whether it's electronic or whether it's paper, we still have to have someone administrator, administrator look through, check the information, all that kind of stuff. So, you know, with a quick turnaround, maybe this is something where, because, I mean, the people who are going to be applying aren't going to be applying from 200 miles away. They're in our city. They can stop by, grab the sheet, or print it, and drop it off. So maybe that's a consideration that, rather than make this more difficult of developing an online application and all the processes and all that kind of stuff, maybe we just keep, actually keep this really simple.
Well, why don't we have our staff bring that back? Because they have to, if it's, if it's filling it out and emailing it in, instead of just mailing it, they can email it.
They could?
Yeah. So depending on what it is. But I'd like to hear from staff as to how they'll manage that whole process.
Well, I think, go ahead. Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Well, what I think we want to do is understand the council's end goal here, and then the process by which we accept the application. We'll figure that out.
Yeah, the end goal is get it out quickly is what I heard.
Yeah, yeah, and so we'll figure out a process to do that.
One pager.
Yeah, yeah. Is that, is that clear then? Melanie, are you okay?
Yeah, no, I'm looking at Jenny to make sure she's got.
Jenny and Jenny?
Look at Valerie, Jenny.
I kind of want to go through this. Madam Mayor, I apologize. Jenny offered something that I think is worthwhile doing if we're going to do it, and give them the ultimate direction that they're looking for. And I just go through the red line and say, yes, we support that as an eligibility or an exclusion, and no, we don't on that one. So they can, they can jump into making that form quickly.
I think just giving them, they'll do that. We've got a smart staff. They know what they're doing.
I know. It seems like it was a pretty confusing, bouncing commercial discussion. Are you comfortable that you understand exactly what we want in the eligible?
I do. I can read all of your minds.
Well, and the thing is, there are eligible expenses, and there are ineligible expenses.
When I'm talking about the businesses, like the revenue and the employee count and the type of business, all that kind of stuff.
I heard you say you don't want any of that.
Right.
Yeah, just strip this down, make as many businesses eligible as possible. And we'll just keep what we have to keep in here and bring it back, bring something back next week.
I think the only thing, the only thing we didn't touch on was the adult businesses that I think we talked about last time, but had not reiterated today.
There's nothing in here.
Yeah, we didn't, we took it out.
You had a note that D and the county are making adult businesses ineligible, and so we didn't speak to that, so.
Just as a note, if you were interested. Wanted to know what you may be missing out on.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Staff? I think they, they have it. No.
Thank you.
Right, simple, one pager.
Okay, thank you so much. And now we move on to the review of the animal ordinance. Chief?
Here's the ducks.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Lynn Lemke, our services manager, is going to present on the ducks tonight.
Welcome, Lynn.
Thank you.
Lemke. We don't see you often, so it's nice to see you.
No, it's always about animals, isn't it? Madam Mayor, members of the council, we are directed by council to bring back information on allowing ducks in the city. So the current ordinance allows for dogs, cats, ferrets, and chickens. So just looking for your direction on moving forward. As part of our research, we surveyed 22 jurisdictions. Six of those jurisdictions allow for ducks with some restrictions, and 16 jurisdictions did not allow for ducks.
Did we find out why they don't allow ducks?
I just don't think a lot of them, well, I shouldn't say that. Some of them have considered ducks in the past and have chosen not to.
What are the restrictions with the six?
Lot size. So these are the six jurisdictions that do allow for ducks.
But they have to be in one-acre lots?
Yeah, Farmington, it's rural districts only, Rosemont, rural districts only, Woodbury, agricultural districts of at least five acres.
And there's Tonka with five ducks per half acre. They love the feathered friends.
Do ducks run around a lot or something, or?
I don't know, but you need some water. They like to.
Yeah, I was wondering if they ever use the.
They like to pedal around in a pond.
Part of the city park.
No, 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 no.
You're talking about.
No, 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 no.
You got cool there, right? Old lady, they can swim around.
That would be an enhanced water feature.
We had troubles with the geese and the feces, and all the parents who just complained about all of the geese.
Canadian geese are different than ducks.
Feces and all of that.
So jurisdictions that do allow for ducks, they don't receive a lot of complaints. The complaints they do receive are about location of the shelter on the property, and someone keeping more ducks than they're allowed to keep, but no nuisance-type complaints. So considerations for council, citizen input feedback, fencing, shelter requirements, if you would have something same or similar to what is required for chickens. Maximum number of ducks allowed, maximum number allowed in combination with other animals on the property. Sanitation, they would require some type of identification tag if they were to get loose. And then the current ordinance also prohibits the feeding of waterfowl, so that would also need some modification.
So in the past, when we did do the, when we allowed chicken, we did have a public hearing around that, because people needed to speak to that. And after listening to everybody, we did allow chickens, but we also put some conditions, right?
Right.
We had to have a coop and no rooster.
No roosters.
No roosters.
Right. Property.
Yeah.
Line restrictions, 50 feet.
And they have to take care of it, because if, just recently, we've been having a lot of complaints about a rural area with the stench of all of the, and yet it's a, I don't know whether, is it a small hobby farm?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. And so those are some of the things that the people spoke to about when we were looking at the chickens is that they have to clean it up.
Right.
And so that they don't have to suffer.
Right. And I apologize, I forgot to include in my presentation, we do get questions about other animals as well. Pot-bellied pigs, snakes.
Oh, yeah, we've got pot-bellied pigs before. Goats?
Goats, um, fox.
We also had the tiny horse.
Monkeys.
And then the people in that neighborhood, because that one person who came and he wanted to have a tiny horse or whatever, said, no way. That neighborhood came out and says, no way it's going to stink the neighborhood if they don't take care of it. So we didn't allow the tiny horse. But, yeah, so, okay. Dan Gustafson?
I, I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel. I mean, we, we did all this through chickens and if we kind of did it like we do the chickens.
Have, have a public hearing and have people come and speak to it.
Just, just do that. By the way, I miss that tiny horse that used to live across the street from City Hall.
No, no, this one was over by.
Still miss that tiny horse.
Well, yeah, but you know, this, that one was grandfathered in. This one was over by Sunset Pond. This one was Sunset Pond area. Councilmember Keely?
Can you go back a slide? There's something in there that I caught. Waterfowl are not to be fed. Is that our current ordinance?
Yes.
So all the ducks at.
That everyone feeds?
Yes, that crossed down Park West that everyone feeds bread, which makes more algae in the water. It's actually against our ordinance.
Yeah. That's part of the, the problem. Yeah. Kara?
So if the process, and I'm fine either way. And if the process is that we have a public hearing and then we go forward with there, that, that's fine. Also, and if we could have a little more, but maybe you have it and we just jumped the gun on you, apologies. Of what, like, like a couple examples of what the other cities have for their, you know, their ordinance regarding ducks, you know, not just that, the number, but, you know, going through a couple of the other things, which is, you know, like, what, what do they require for shelter? You know, that kind of thing. I think that would be helpful. Then we can kind of look at basing it off of there. I mean, one, although one way that ducks are different than chickens is, I mean, one of the reasons why people don't want roosters is because they crow and drakes don't crow. So, I mean, like, there, there are some similarities, but there's also some differences and we should look at that. So.
Yeah, Councilmember Schultz, they did do the same for chickens as ducks in the cities that allowed for the ducks.
So no, no males?
Um, well, that I don't know. But as far as their requirements for setbacks and.
Gotcha.
So it just followed it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's good. When we, when we have that public hearing, that's good information for our background.
Okay.
Yeah. Vince?
Thank you. I just want to reiterate what everybody's said here and I think a public hearing is a good idea so we could get some people that have some more specific knowledge on this. And we can get some maybe more specific questions answered, but I think just mimicking our chicken ordinance or even just throwing ducks into the same category as being allowed, based on everything I've received on this up to this point, these actually seem to be less of a concern than chickens as far as their impact to the community. Because they can't fly and they can't jump because they're fat. So it just, this, I, I think that this would be less of a concern than even chickens. So.
Fat shaming the ducks?
I think you could fat shame ducks.
Yeah. And, and it's always good because this is, this is about us all living in harmony together and to have people understand when they, that's, that's the reason when we have a public hearing on things and allowing this, it's, it's not just the five of us sitting up here making that decision, but it, it's about the community.
Absolutely.
And you're saying to somebody, you know, you're going to, if, if your neighbor's going to have a a duck or a chicken, because it was, they say, no, no roosters. They don't want to be awakened. And so that was some of the things that. And then how many?
Yep.
You know? And the other thing that was highly discussed at one of those was the stench.
Well, I think that's something to discuss because one of the point, the points that was brought up is that the bedding for ducks and that ducks create more moisture so that their habitats actually need different types of ventilation than chickens.
Yeah.
So those are the things I'm hoping that when we have a public hearing, we can have somebody that knows this stuff so we can mold that ordinance to mimic but be maybe specific to those types of things.
Okay. All right. Melanie?
Can I ask a process question, Madam Mayor and Council? And, and hearing the word public hearing, I think typically we would do kind of a, an out, community outreach, open house kind of a event. One or the other. So I'm just curious what the council's preference is, if you have a preference.
I just want the public to be involved. It's about civic engagement. So if we can have the same process where we have a town reach out to the community and they come in and talk to staff and they have that. But then when it comes before us, then we have all of that background information. Who came? How many people came? What did they have to say? And you know, and then all of the other information with regard to what that ordinance would look like and what's the model ordinance that we can, from best practices that we can adopt as well. That fits us. I, I don't care. In the past, we did a, a public hearing and it was a council public hearing and it didn't have to do, go to the planning commission. But if we do a, a citizen outreach, I'm okay with that. I don't know if, yeah, I'm seeing everybody saying, I just want civic engagement. I just want the people to be, to know that we're going to do this so that they have a voice.
We've got mechanisms to do that. Absolutely.
Yep. All right. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And before we proceed with the, the next agenda item, because I think that might also have a lot of discussion, we're going to take a, a break. We're going to take a five-minute break.
Bring food in here.
Ryan, just here for the fun.
Did you know back then when this first?
I'm here for like Crystal Lake.
You were on the lake at that time. Was it because it was?
We'll get to it. We'll get to it.
Yeah.
Because the people were live eating.
I'm gonna start whining.
And then because it was.
We decided.
We are live.
We're in some trouble. It's easy to get in trouble.
We're live.
Everybody is now back. We are. We have, I'm reconvening our Burnsville work session. And the next item is the city council values. And our city manager, Melanie Mescallee, is presenting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I will keep this efficient because you've seen this before.
Yeah.
Over the last year and a half or so, we've been working on branding. We adopted a new branding of You Belong Here. An updated vision that Burnsville is a vibrant city, boldly leading, welcoming to all. We've worked on updated strategic priorities, which we identified there. And the work most recently done by the council was to talk about what are the values of the council. So we had a couple of work sessions with a facilitator. Mike Sable came in earlier this year and walked through with the council, what does this look like to you? At our last meeting, council directed staff to take that feedback and pull something together for council consideration. So what we have done is that very action. And what you have before you tonight are five values that we heard resonated with the council. And we've put a little short narrative following each of those values to try to capture really what does that mean? The intent is to keep this short, easy to remember, easy to integrate into what we do on a daily basis as we serve, as the council serves the community. So the values that we heard were respect. That means we're paying attention to people. We're respecting integrity. We're treating people with dignity and courtesy. Belonging, that is, you know, we're valuing differences. We understand that not everybody is coming from the same place and that we have a community that people feel comfortable and want to be here. Stewardship is that we're going to care for our resources, whether those are financial, personnel, what does, whatever that might look like to serve the community, not only for today, but making decisions that serve the community longer term.
And that includes our assets.
Indeed.
Yep.
Adaptability, that's being flexible, right? That's one of those values that the council adopted when we really intentionally talked about our response to COVID-19. We want to think about how we are going to continually improve. We're going to adjust. We're going to be flexible and nimble and adaptable as we serve the community. And finally, ethical. We're committed. The council said they're committed to doing what's right. We're going to be transparent. We're going to be honest and serve the community in an ethical manner. So those were the values and the brief description that staff pulled together. And looking for council feedback on that. And once you're comfortable, we would then bring this forward at a future council meeting for adoption. And we would frame it and put it up in the council chambers like we had for our other values and integrate it into the other communication that we have with the, with the community. With that, happy to stand for your feedback.
So Melanie, on the, on the, on the respect piece, because I think that we've got it, you know, the, the one thing that I think is missing here is that under respect, that we also are fair and just.
Madam Mayor and Council.
As part of, when we talk about that, that the things that we do, we're respectful of everybody, but we're also fair and just in the way that we also make decisions respectfully.
Madam Mayor and Council, these are your values. So whatever words you want to have in here. My encouragement is to, to keep it short, keep it succinct, be disciplined with the words that we use. We can't have every word in there. It doesn't mean we wouldn't be fair and just, certainly. But whatever words you want to have in here, this is your document.
Yeah, because I like the fact, because the word, when it says respect, then we all have a shared meaning on what that is. And that's the only thing that I, I would ask my colleagues if we look at respect to dignity and understanding, fair and just, in the way that we not only treat one another, but in the way that we make decisions.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I like it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so yeah.
Sorry, I, I just had a thought. I'm looking at what you have here. And we do what's right. I think that that is fair and just, under ethical.
Yeah.
It's true. Different way of saying it is all, but yeah.
Yeah, I just like the words fair and just. But we do what's right is under ethical, but yeah. So there's four who say that we can do that.
If you'd like it in there, I have no issue with it being added in there.
Okay.
So what would it read?
I think you could just add it to the list of courtesy, dignity, understanding, and we are fair and just.
Yeah.
I want to get that reviewed by an English teacher, but I'm sure that's probably okay.
So it's all under shared. That's the only thing. But otherwise, I think everything reflects the work that we do.
Is there any of those words that you would want to remove and replace with fair and just, or?
No.
Okay.
Share and just, just being part of the shared meaning. Unless you want to put share and just under the ethical part, it doesn't matter whether it's there or under respect.
You could do, we are fair and just and do what's right.
Yeah.
Guided by transparency and honesty.
Now, that fits better down there.
That fits better.
Why don't we wordsmith that a little bit, ensuring that we've got fair and just under that ethical?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's fit better down there.
That, that works for me. It's just putting it there. I just. But otherwise, I don't know about my colleagues.
I like it.
Yeah. Okay. Did, did you? Okay, Dan Keely.
Well, because you were just looking here. I didn't. I, I just have a question. Do we need to insert the word all, or is, when we say we pay attention to people, does that, by stating the word people, does that make it inclusive of all? Or is it need to say the word all?
People are people.
All people.
Don't pay attention to golden retrievers.
And I think maybe part of it's driven by a lot of the, you know, societal things going on that, that there's words there that trigger truly meaning everybody. Right. Without even using, or maybe using the word inclusive. But I feel like that's the one word, or something that's like that, that's, that's missing. That I kind of feel like today it's better stated than just implied.
Where all people feel, feel at home. Is that, that all people, is that where you're going with that? Is that under belonging?
Well, you know, we value differences, inclusiveness, creating a community where people feel at home. That's a place that can go. When, I mentioned that to city manager Lee before, but just when I was reading, respect, you know, we pay attention to people.
Yeah.
I think we pay attention to all people makes a bolder statement of inclusiveness, just because you're putting the word all in there.
Would that come under belonging?
Well, it's kind of both, yeah.
Where all people feel at home?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, I might, I might offer that the absence of that word in my mind doesn't imply that we won't, that it doesn't mean all. I mean, I.
Right.
So the absence of a word doesn't mean it's excluded, I guess, is the way I'm trying to clumsily say it. So if it's, again, council's values, if it's what you want in there, we can, we can add it in there. The intent is, again, have a broad umbrella, right? That's, that's what we heard from the council. You want to be welcoming and warm and open and accepting.
Okay. Kara?
I, I like it. I like it how it is. But I'm amenable. I, I don't think anyone is suggesting anything that wildly changes anything. So I'm, I'm pretty chill about that. So my, my nitpick will be to have everything read the same on adaptability. Although I realize we're talking about the future, keeping it into present tense still works. We create a better future through continual improvement and adjusting to an ever-changing environment.
The English in me is making me crazy that I didn't notice that. So yes, I think that's a good catch.
Okay. All right.
Score, stump the staff on the grammar.
Are we all okay with what's presented here? Okay. All right. Bring it back for adoption. Melanie.
Wonderful. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time.
Just add that under ethical, the fair and just. Okay, great. All right, we're moving on. And we are at roundtable. Melanie, the request for reducing penalties for Crystal Lake restriction.
Madam Mayor and Council, recently, Mr. Scott Bordeaux reached out to staff in the council and asked for consideration of a change in the penalties for violations on, water use violations on Crystal Lake. So I believe Mr. Bordeaux is on the line. He was planning to call in. But a quick background, as I understand it, this predated me, is that this item came up at about two, three years ago. And the request was for expansion of the hours for which water skiing was allowed on Crystal Lake. And at that time, the council directed some community outreach, neighborhood meetings, discussion, and then report back to the council.
Crystal Lake Association.
And that came back early 2018. At that time, council chose to not make any changes. So I think the question is before you again tonight, what you want to, what you want to do. And I'm looking to see if Mr. Bordeaux is, is on, because he did indicate he was going to call in tonight.
Yeah, and I don't know if, if he has or not. I have, I haven't gotten anything from.
I, I'm not seeing anything either, Madam Mayor. So I guess what we would ask of you, we can maybe move on to other items, and if he hops on, we can, we can jump back to this. But we'd look for council's direction. Where do we go with this? What are the next steps? Or what should we communicate to Mr. Bordeaux?
This isn't a speed limit change. This is actually just what the penalty is for violating speed or wake or whatever.
Yeah, from.
From misdemeanor to petty misdemeanor, so it's not on their record.
Yeah, and I remember back then, it was the, the Lake Association who didn't want to change it. And also, we looked at Lakeville, and Lakeville had the same.
Penalty?
Penalties as, as we did.
Do we know what the other lakes that were noted in the email used a petty misdemeanor instead of misdemeanor for these water craft infractions?
I, I believe council member, Madam Mayor and council member Keely, that's Mr. Bordeaux's contention is, I think it was Scott County perhaps, that they have a, a different penalty. Staff has not any research on this at this point, so I couldn't speak to what other communities or, or counties do.
I, I would also, again, would like to have staff reach out to the association, the Crystal Lake Association. And then also look at Lakeville and see, and then bring it back, and we can make a decision about that or else. But I would like the, the Crystal Lake Association to weigh in, because we asked them last time to weigh in, and they did.
Madam Mayor and Council, I can say that the Lakeville City Code mirrors the Burnsville City Code. And to my understanding from city attorney Jamnik, those provisions have been in effect since about 1989. So we would want to work with Lakeville on any changes. Inconsistency would be problematic.
It appears it might be now between Scott and Carver and us, and essentially Dakota. He did bring, he sent an attachment that reflects Carver, but I can't, and it shows the fines, but I can't tell if it's petty or standard misdemeanor.
Okay.
Kara?
Two counties that are inconsistent with us, possibly.
Kara?
You know, I think we're in a little bit of a different position culturally in talking about areas of criminal justice reform. And what we want to consider a criminal act, how severe that criminal act is, what the penalties are for criminal acts, and how that can affect and follow a person through their life. So I do realize that we talked about expanding the times. Someone could water ski and that type of thing. But this is a slightly different conversation, which is, is violating this something that should follow you around for pretty much the rest of your life? So that is a conversation that I would like to have.
Well, and I would also like to have the conversation, but I'm not going to be shy about saying I, in agreement that this should be reduced to a petty misdemeanor. I believe that's the case on our roads with a vehicle, and I don't know why it would be different on a boat on water, unless there's information that we're missing. And so I'm welcome additional conversation about this. But as it stands right now, I have absolutely no issue dropping this to a petty misdemeanor.
Yeah, it's, it's good to have a lot of, to have some input from folks. And then we can gather that information and make a decision.
I, I think we can have the input, but I agree with Vince. I think it should be lowered to.
Okay. Dan K?
I would agree. I want to, I want to see it lowered. There was a concern about people just paying the fine and repeating the, the infraction. And so if, we asked city manager Jamnik if there was a way to put in a sort of a scale, like, you know.
If you do it three times a year.
Three and one, yeah. It's gonna pop up. Once a year, no big deal. But if you're doing it three times, because you're just paying the fine because you're wealthy enough to do so, and you're just going to continue to repeat, then how do we?
So you remember that, the input from the, the lake owners association? Because they said, you know, people around here would just pay the fine and keep doing it.
Yeah. And I don't know, is there any evidence that someone did that when it was a petty misdemeanor? That they were just paying the fine and repeating the?
Well, I don't know.
Infraction?
Because I don't think.
Or was it just a concern that was unfair?
I don't think we, ours goes back to 1989. It wasn't, they, it was a request to lower it back then.
Who gives the tickets for that anyways?
Pardon me?
Who gives the tickets for that?
Dakota County does the enforcement.
Oh, they do the enforcement, okay.
They have enforcement over waterways.
They would have, certainly have records of how many infractions there have been and many times someone continually did an infraction. I would be okay, just, I'd support just changing it. I, I just think it's, to council member Schultz's point, I really don't think violating a no wake or, or skiing too early or too late should be something that is stick, that is as sticky as misdemeanors are on your record. We can look at the fine and up the fine if we want on a, on a scale. But I, I just, in principle, I do not believe they should be on your record as misdemeanors are versus petty.
So.
I agree with that.
Yeah. Okay.
So, Madam Mayor, I'm hearing that you want some back additional information. There's general support for exploring this.
Yeah.
I want to make sure we're in contact with Crystal Lake Association, City of Lakeville, Dakota County, and Joel will help us out with that. So we will, and I'll follow up with Mr. Bordeaux, since he wasn't able to join us tonight and kind of give him the summary.
You, you have it all, so I just want to make sure that we have good information, but there is support to lower it to a petty. So, okay, very good. That's that. Anybody? Vince, do you have any reports?
Um, no, we have our first MLC meeting tomorrow, and I'll have probably more in our next meeting.
Okay, Kara?
No, unfortunately, I was not able to attend my meeting because I was at a work event out of town, so.
Dan G?
At our DBB meeting, we had three ISPs speak to us about what they'd like to do throughout the county and everything. I think you're all getting reports on that, if you haven't gotten it already. Also, we'll be discussing that down the road, but it was some pretty interesting conversation that came up during those meetings. People, there are people out there that really want to do something and see how that works. And they're, and they're Minnesota businesses too, which is kind of exciting.
Okay. Dan K?
MBTA is just trying to survive COVID and the roughly 95% drop off in ridership and funding fall offs. There's going to be some just dramatic, severe challenges for transit agencies to, to survive this.
I hate to interrupt you, but you said 95%?
Yeah, it was, it was basically, we, we were servicing 5%. When, when COVID hit and everyone, and the shelter in place order came, we really were running 5% of the people that we normally serve. That's how devastating, and it was pretty much that everywhere. Every system was 93 to 95%.
Yeah, because everybody was working remotely.
Yeah. I mean, I, I drive by the, the mass transit parking ramp and, and kind of eyeball every day I go by just to see how many more cars are parking there. But it's, it's, it's a, it's a very severe challenge. I-35 solutions, we got a presentation from Mendat on 494 I-35 intersection and related roadway improvements, which is pretty exciting for that intersection. It's one of the worst. It is coming in phases because of funding. So it'll, it's just going to be a never-ending construction sort of thing on and off for the next decade or so. But the first phase is going to bring some good relief for folks going northbound to westbound 494 off of our 35. Our bridge is, just continues to per ride along on schedule. I mean, I haven't heard a single issue delay of any kind. Mr. Peterson, do you have anything that you want to insert into that comment?
If anything, they're ahead of schedule.
Everything's, yeah. So, you know, we're, we're still waiting on funding of a grant that we applied for to make the pedestrian and bike trail floodproof.
Oh, yeah.
So far, we were following it, but we haven't got an answer. And the biking community continues to stay in communication with us on the status and what they can do to help. And I've committed to them that I will continue to advocate any possible funding that can be found to help get it done. It was, again, I feel like it's a broken record, but when you spend $150 million on a new bridge and you don't flood proof the on-ramp for pedestrian and bikers, you really basically said cars are important. And as much as we are investing in pedestrian and bikes, and we really want everybody to do that, and we, but, you know, if there's a flood event, you just won't be able to cross the river. Really, really, really poor decision on Mendat, forced bike budget limitations. But hopefully, with that grant help or other monies that we can find, we'll be able to raise it, so it won't be a problem. This year, so far, the river level is fairly low. Cross your fingers it stays that way through the summer. And at least Black Dog Trail will remain open. And hopefully next year, when the bridge is open, I think it's scheduled to open fall of next year? Is it? Is it fall next year? Yeah. Still can't believe we got that long to go, because there's so much done. I think that is it. Thank you.
Okay. The regional council of mayors have had a meeting with the governor last Friday. And we talked about what he would be doing with regard to a mandate on masks. That'll be coming. But most of all, we also talked about schools, safe reopening for schools. And, and then this last Monday, we met with all of our superintendents. The RCM, the regional council of mayors, met with our superintendents to understand their thinking around a safe reopening of schools. What people don't understand, if we're talking about safe reopening of schools, the amount of money that's going to go into that simply because if you're going to practice social distancing. First of all, transportation cost. There's not enough buses to have social distance for the kids in the bus. Not enough drivers to drive buses that will allow for social distance. There is also the issue of the cost that the school district has, because since COVID hit, our community development area has been doing free childcare for first responders' children and medical personnel's children. And so that, that's not sustainable. And so we talked to the governor about that. And then there are teachers who are also concerned about safe reopening of schools and how that's going to be. Is it, how are we going to do that when you have all the children coming in? And then most of the time, what they're going to be doing is disinfecting, 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 or teaching. And so is there a hybrid that can come into that? So there's a lot that we don't know about what they think about. And so the superintendents talked about that, but it was good that I had a conversation. Melanie and I are now meeting with, with the superintendent and the chair of the school board to get that information before I went into the meeting with the governor. And again, I asked the governor that he partner with us. We know our business is better. And that if he's looking at a mandate for masks, then it should be on a region by region or on hotspots. But allow us to, to do some of that. Right now, there are a lot of cities who are mandating masks and social distancing, because it's the only treatment that we have to, to slow down the spread. So there's been, I've participated in four meetings with the governor. First with MLC mayors, then the regional council of mayors and, and Minnesota mayors together. And, and then also with our superintendents. There's a lot to be done. And our joint meeting with Savage is coming up. And of course, we're out. We don't meet for the Burnsville Community Foundation in the summer. I think, and then, of course, International Festival is canceled for this year. And I think the most pertinent report was the regional council of mayors and, and the meetings with the governor. So, yes.
Mayor, couch, did he indicate, did the governor indicate when he was going to be giving guidance to schools so that they can plan?
That's, that's coming. So we met on, on Friday, and he said in 10 days. Because there's a lot of work that they need to work through, through the Department of Education, working with the superintendents association. And so there's a lot of pieces, but they're working through all of that. So it's nice that there's a lot of voices that he's listening to.
Right. And then did he give any indication on when he would be deciding whether he would be releasing local control for issues such as masks or retaining central control?
Again, he's looking at the data, and you know what? We're doing very well in Minnesota, and he articulated that, that we don't have spikes. And so, if we continue to do what we're doing in Minnesota and slow the spread and don't have as many cases, you know, he, they're watching all of that, so, nothing.
I appreciate you advocating for local control, absolutely, thank you.
Yeah, Melanie?
I was just going to say, the superintendent mentioned today, July 27th, is the date for that guidance.
Yeah, because, so that'll be about that 10 days too. Yeah, but they've got, I, I was really appreciative of hearing him talking about bringing not only the teachers, the superintendents, and the busing and all of that, that there's so much. And then, how are we going to pay for all of this to be sustainable? You know, childcare, all of those things that have to, so there's a lot of pieces that we need to, that he and the group. So, we're going to be meeting on a regular basis with him as we continue to move through all of this. Dan K?
And the mental health of the families, children.
Yeah, yeah, all of that.
I just, since you brought it up, Minnesota Retailers Association called an emergency board meeting tomorrow at 4:10, and at 4:30 Commissioner Grove will be on the call, and face mask is, is the point of the discussion. So, I will share the thoughts, and I'm anxious to hear from the other retailers, many who represent all the large chains of convenience stores, gas, retail, what their feelings are. And many of those folks sit on boards around many states, so we usually get a fairly regional perspective.
I can tell you that Commissioner Grove has engaged in every one of our meetings, on the mayor's meetings, and he has been terrific. I, I can't say enough about the work that he's doing and listening to us and bringing it back to the cabinet and to the, to the, to the governor. And so, you know, I think that's what it's about, it's about connecting, having people understand what you're, what we're asking about and what the, what the, what the problems and the challenges are. And I say to him that our restaurants and our businesses want to stay open, and they're making good choices. So when a business makes a choice on their own policy to, that you need to wear a mask to come in, that's their policy, and we all need to respect that, whether it's Menards or Costco or, or some of the restaurants. You know, we need to respect that, they are concerned about their personnel. Some of them have had people getting sick, and so, and one person, and if you were working in the same shift, now that restaurant had to lay off and quarantine for 14 days, however many of those people are. Now they're short, and they don't want that to happen, so they're very conscientious about that. And I've been talking to a lot of them. And people don't want to see us closed down, like, again, like Washington State, Oregon, California, Texas, Arizona, well, not Arizona, Florida is, but with the challenges that they're having. So, I don't think in Minnesota we're doing good, and I listen to all of that and, and watch whether we are spreading or we're staying at even. So that's where we're at, but yeah, I think you will enjoy listening, well, because he usually listens and then he, he responds. Commissioner Grove, he's excellent. Okay, Melanie, do you have anything to report?
I do not, Madam Mayor.
Okay, very good. If there's nothing else, we stand adjourned by acclamation, thank you, everybody.
I was going to stand between you guys and the chairman.